And you are live, Mr. Chair.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the June 27, 2022 Board of Selectmen Meeting. This open meeting of the Northborough Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with the February 15, 2022 Act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the Northborough Board of Selectmen are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows Northborough Board of Selectmen to meet entirely remotely, so as long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of the meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless participation is required by law, this meeting will feature public comment. Let's go around the virtual room and confirm that we can hear everybody, just in the order of which I see who I assume I seen. Scott Rogers, are you there?
Present.
Fantastic. Jason Perro.
Present.
Kristen Wickstead.
Present.
Julianne Hirsch.
Present.
And I'm Mitch Cohen. I am present and staff. I know we have John Cudere, Town Administrator.
Present.
And we also have Becca Meekins, Assistant Town Administrator.
Present.
Scott Sharpton here, DPW Director.
Present.
And we have Bill Liver, Fire Police Chief. I almost changed your department there.
Present.
And host as always, Dave Parenti.
I'm present.
All right. We also have Northborough Cable with us assisting with the technical stuff. All right, let's begin. We have a couple sets of meeting minutes. Of June 13 and then June 16. Would someone like to make a motion? I will note that I from the office emailed out minor corrections to those earlier, filling in a couple of names and so forth. So nothing substantive relative to the the meeting minutes that the public has seen. But we'll take a motion on the amended versions.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the June 13 and 2022 meeting minutes as amended and the June 16 meeting minutes as amended.
Okay, motion made by Kristen seconded by Scott in the discussion before we vote. Uh, let's see, let's go backwards. Julianne, how do you vote? I didn't, I didn't hear an answer to that, Julianne.
Yes.
Okay, Kristen.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Scott.
Hi.
And I vote, I vote as unanimous in favor. All right. Next up, we have a public hearing. I will open the public hearing, uh, which is to consider an application from GNI 9. We had some discussion earlier whether that's an X or a nine. I'm going to assume nine. Forbes Whitney LLC to amend the existing above-ground storage license for the premises located at 30 Forbes Road by increasing the onsite storage of flammable and combustible liquids, flammable gases and flammable solids. Um, I do want to make a quick note before we bring folks in. We had a little typo in the first version of the agenda that the word increasing was substituted by the word decreasing that was then amended and so forth. Um, and we will decide later whether that's going to impact any part of our decision-making process for the night as to how to proceed. Um, I'm sure we have, I think, at least one person, if not multiple, to bring in. Dave, you want to take care of bringing them in?
Working on it now.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hey, Dave, I don't know if you have anyone else coming in, if it's just you.
Uh, no, I do. I should have about four other folks in the.
Just give me the names and I'll bring them in.
Sure. George Gold.
Okay. Go ahead.
Uh, Rachel Weiskin.
Rachel, got her.
Alex Boden.
I assume that's. There you go. Yep.
And, uh, John Eisenberg.
Got him.
Waiting for one more camera to turn on if the person so desires. All right, well, welcome to the, uh, public hearing, the Northborough Board of Selectmen Meeting. Dave, or anybody else, do you want to give us a quick summary as to what you're looking to do? We've all seen the application and, um, and the materials submitted by town departments also.
Um, so good evening. Uh, my name is John Eisenberg. I'm a fire protection engineer and a chemical engineer, uh, with ARUP, A R U P. Um, working out of our, our local office, which is in Boston. Um, I'm a consultant to Aspen Aerogels and in this case as well to CBRE, um, who is the owner's representative for the building. Uh, Aspen is the tenant, as you know. Um, so I've been working with the team over the past couple of months, um, to, uh, figure this out in terms of what increase to flammable liquids and the other materials, um, are needed to support Aspen's business. And so we're, we're, we're here, uh, represented across multiple disciplines on the team tonight to basically answer any questions that the board may have on the special package.
Now, I'm going to interrupt real quick. I'm very sorry. I forgot to give you the name of Brianne. Uh, she's also in the queue. She's representing the owner, Brianne Timorah.
Yeah, I thought I recognized her name, but I wasn't sure, so I didn't bring her in.
Great. Looks like she is now in.
Um, thank you all.
Sure. Anything else you want to, uh, to present us with before we go around and see if there are questions from the board before the public?
Um, I think just, just to add that there are a number of attachments, uh, that were included, uh, with the application for the license increase, um, including a site plan, um, including an explanation from Aspen on the, basically the business need, uh, that's driving the, uh, the application for the increase. Um, also, you know, assorted other, uh, documents, um, to just add color to the, you know, to the request.
Sure. Members of the board, any questions? Scott.
Yeah, hi. Thanks for joining us. Thank, I guess if you could give us just, uh, some context, then a little bit of an overview of the work that's being done at the facility. Uh, what's changed in the last couple of years that, that is bringing up the forest tonight, uh, with the increase in, in storage?
Well, I'll take that one. I'm the Chief Technology Officer, uh, of Aspen Aerogels, and I've been with the company since, uh, 1999. So we've grown up in Northborough. Uh, our current, um, our current headquarters has just moved this, this year to Marlboro. And so the facility is now a research and development center. And we've had, uh, 25 people there about scientists and engineers working, uh, in the facility. And they, as part of their work, chemists, material scientists, engineers, uh, draw on chemical stores and, and do experiments to develop, uh, new products and processes. And so what we're doing is we're expanding a lot. We're going into automotive safety. And, uh, our business is expanding rapidly. Um, right now, we've basically doubled our, our employee roster here in the past year. Uh, and so we're expanding and our R and D facility is now going to have up to about 60 people that are all scientists, engineers, and with a few administrators. And so really the load on the, on the chemical stores and the amount of work is generating, uh, we need more storage, uh, in order to complete uh, the daily tests that we do. And we've expanded into battery materials as well as the automotive safety side. So we're developing new, new products and we need, uh, to expand our license so that we're not so squeezed with a cap that, that makes us have to, uh, operate to the license limit basically on a daily basis.
Excellent. If I can, uh, kind of follow up a couple more. So then the, the materials themselves, um, some of the public might not have, you know, know exactly what some of the materials are. Can you provide a, you know, brief description of how they're used?
Sure. Uh, we make a product that's based on a technology called aerogel technology. And it is basically a nanoporous solid, meaning it is a solid which is composed primarily of air. Uh, and the, the air, uh, pores within the material are on the size of one billionth of one meter or so, a few billions of a meter. Um, our product technology is fairly unique. We reinforce these materials with fiber so that they can be flexible. And therefore they can be cut and applied and sewed and, and adhered to things. And the, uh, primary market in the early years was industrial energy efficiency. And so we make high, very high temperature insulation as well as very low temperature insulation, uh, which has really served as our main marketplace for these many years. We, um, we have a revenue base of about $120 million right now, but that is now picking up significantly. That's per year. Uh, it's now picking up significantly as we're going into the automotive, um, and battery safety area where electric vehicles, uh, lithium ion batteries, for instance, have, uh, some safety issues on occasion. And so we put materials in between cells that will prevent something called thermal runaway, which will allow these vehicles to catch on fire, propagating throughout the entire battery module system. So we're, we're finding a lot of excitement out there from OEMs like GM and Toyota, um, and BW and many other OEMs. And so we're, we're working hard to develop products that are going to fit into their vehicles.
That's excellent. Thank you for that context. I think, uh, in a subsequent run, I might have, uh, some, uh, questions for staff, but that's great for the applicant. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicants? Uh, Jason?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, you mentioned, uh, I'm sorry, I forget who said this, but someone mentioned earlier, the issue of having to operate at the maximum capacity of the existing storage currently. Uh, you're requesting an increase. Could I ask what you anticipate, um, the actual, uh, capacity to be relative to that proposed maximum?
Right. I guess I'll take that. I, we're likely to operate at about three quarters of that license limit to give us enough headroom so that we can store, uh, waste and be able to operate, you know? When I refer to operating near the limit, I'm talking about, um, basically exchanging waste for clean solvent uh, as we operate. And, you know, we can't take in sometimes enough, uh, material to do experiments before we ship the waste out. And it's caused us to stop doing experiments or to delay things. And so that's being too close to the limit, in my opinion. So we would like to be, you know, let's say 25% away from that limit. That's what I anticipate.
Thank you. Sure. Julianne, did you have your hand up earlier?
I did. Thank you. Um, so my first question is, your, your expansion at the Northborough site, does that include more scientists and engineers or? You've mentioned that you have 60 people working there now, but you also have just opened something in Marlboro.
We currently have about 48 people working there now, and we anticipate going up to a little over 60, uh, maybe 65 at the maximum.
At the Northborough plant.
At the 30 Forbes Road Building B site, yes.
Okay.
Um, that's just R and D.
Great. Um, and so in the, in the application, it said that you get deliveries or somebody takes, takes out the substances you don't need, uh, like once or twice a week. Is, is that what, am I saying that correctly? And if so, um, like how, what are you talking about? Is this a huge vehicle that comes in? And is it a third-party transportation? What, how does that work?
So I can take this. So I'm Rachel. I'm the Director of Environmental Health and Safety. Um, so, so what George is referring to, um, and what he just mentioned, um, with his response to Jason, is that we have hazardous materials and we have hazardous waste. So we have materials that come in and we receive them, and then we are required legally to ship out our hazardous waste. So to answer your question, we have a third party, um, who removes, so they're licensed and bonded. And that is their job to actually safely transport our hazardous waste, um, to, uh, so they're, they're known as a T S D F. So they're transporter of hazardous materials, or I'm sorry, hazardous waste that they properly, um, transport, they treat and they dispose of at an off-site location.
But, but how often does that happen? Twice, twice a week, once a week? And what's the size of the vehicle?
Alex, are you, Alex is, uh, works for me. He is on the call. Alex, are you having a semi? What is the size of the truck that comes in? And how often are you having pickups? I believe the pickups are once a week. And what's the size of the truck that comes in? Alex, can you speak up again, please?
Nick. I, I can answer that, I guess.
Sorry, his volume is cutting in and out.
Uh, the, we, we basically use box trucks, or we don't use it, but Clean Harbors or whoever is, is our way is using box trucks. I think these are what, 20, 20 to 25 feet long.
Yeah.
So not a semi, not a large, not the largest vehicle by any means. It's, uh, but delivery truck size.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm, sure.
Chris.
Hi. So I guess this is a question for Rachel. Um, so you said there's hazardous materials and hazardous waste, right? So to do the work that they're doing there, can you just give me a little, this is all really new to me. Can you just give me a little rundown of how it works?
Sure. So, so because it's a lab, it falls under OSHA's chemical hygiene plan, which requires very careful, um, very calcu-, very careful sort of calculations of how much material comes in and how much goes out the door. Because we have to be in compliance with our license and our permit. So we will receive materials in, in support of the battery operation and/or the other operation, the aerogel operation. So different, um, labs, because there's a couple of different labs, we'll use different materials. And so that is very carefully recorded in terms of the volumes that are used. Whatever is not used is kept in storage. So they will go in and they will take out the materials that they use, that they need on a daily basis. Everything else stays in storage. They will use whatever they need. And whatever is waste then goes into a storage air for waste. And then once a week it shipped out as waste. So again, they're only taking out what they need. Everything else is stored. Everything that's waste is then put in the waste room and that's shipped out as waste once a week. Um, and that's to run their various experiments, whether it's in support of the batteries lab or in support of the aerogels lab.
Right. I would, uh, I think it might be useful for me to just add a little bit about what type of waste that we generate. Sure. Our primary waste stream, uh, is ethanol-based. So this is the same ethanol that's released in baking a bread or the stuff that you might drink if you do partake of alcohol. Uh, and we also have mineral spirits, which is a little bit more like, uh, heavy kerosene. And that, that's really the bulk of the waste that we generate. We don't work with biologicals or radioactives or things that at least I would find terrifying. Uh, you know, we're, we utilize the ethanol as a solvent, uh, that gives us these air-filled pores after we've done our processing. Um, we utilize CO2 as a, a carbon dioxide as a process solvent, uh, under pressure. And, uh, that is not able to be shipped out because it, it basically is a gas. Um, but that's our other, uh, waste component as well.
Okay, so you have the two technologies. You have the aerogel that you've sort of described to us, which is still very, um, mysterious in my brain. But I do have an electric car, so the battery thing I get, and I think it's great. Um, so I hope you're also working with Ford. Um, but the, uh, the, so, and battery safety is really a big deal. I mean, even just getting on an airplane, you have to take your little, uh, charger out of your suitcase and put it in your bag because it might start a fire, which always makes me think, well, what, if it started a fire in the cabin, isn't that bad too? And anyway, I won't ramble on too long, but, um, so it, it sounds like it's a really, um, great stuff that you're working on. Um, but you have to understand that we are also representing, or we are representing the residents in this neighborhood. And, um, we haven't had this information for a ton of time. So, um, my biggest question is probably like, have you ever had a spill or, or a problem where, because like what you were describing to me, Rachel was very like, this is how it works and this is how it's always going to work. But obviously sometimes things go wrong. So has every, anything gone wrong at this facility? And, and if, if so, like what level of, um, mess was it?
Sure. So I'll, I'll speak to, you know, I've, I've been on board for about two years and we have not had any spills, certainly that I'm aware of. Um, but let me speak to, you know, what we have in place, right? So because of our hazardous waste, we have, um, a hazardous waste management and control plan. We have a hazardous waste contingency plan and baked within those, right, are what we do in the event of, um, we have an emergency preparedness and response plan. So, you know, those include things like, um, all of our plans and programs are set, sent to not only the fire department, but the police department, um, the occupational clinics that we use. So we have relationships and all of those programs in terms of emergency response are sent to anyone who would come on site in the event of. Um, because we don't, we're not required to have something, you know, um, under the guise of stormwater, we're not required to have that sort of plan, you know? Um, and so we do training for, you know, any of our, if you think of it, um, environmental liabilities, we do training on that annually. Um, so I can't think of, you know, in recent times, any spill that we've had. Um, George can, you know, he can answer anything that's happened historically. But since I've been there, we have not had any escape in that capacity. Um, from an injury perspective, we've not had any serious knocking on wood right here or faux wood. We've not had any serious injuries, um, since I've been there at that facility or that location. Um, and again, we have very highly regimented, you know, programs, um, that encompass not only our laboratory safety, but all, you know, OSHA and if you will think of it, um, EPA programs up there for this reason. And everything is really managed with really good rigor and control, um, at that site. Because we're, we're aware and we're cognizant of the neighborhood in which we're in. And, and whether it was there or any location, right, we, we want to do all of the right things for our employees, our communities, our neighborhoods, everything. So, but, but I, I can't think of anything, George, unless you know of anything that's happening.
No, we, we have not had any significant spills or loss of containment from the facility. Um, we have to report anything over five gallons by law. Uh, that would be a spill, but we have not anything like that. I, I'm sure we've had a few very minor spills, but we have skill spill kits and we basically take care of these things immediately. Cause we're, you know, we're, we're working with these materials. We don't want them to be out of our control either. And so we clean them up right away if there's ever, uh, any incidents.
And, and I'll add, we also have, you know, contracts with our third, so the hazardous waste vendor that we use to take off our hazardous waste. We also have a contract with them in the event of they are spill responder, they are emergency responder. And it's 24 hours a day, seven days a week, even though we're not operational seven days a week up there. But the event of an escape, we call them and they will, you know, run contingency for us in the event of any escape.
Okay. Uh, how far away are they?
They're loca-, uh, I'm trying to think of where their closest one is. I think it's in, I can find out. Um, I want to say it's in Marlboro or it's in Worcester. Um, but we use them in East Providence and they have all sorts of satellite areas everywhere.
So the, the largest container that we have, which is probably your biggest risk, is a 55 gallon drum. And we only have those inside of our H2, uh, dispensing room and storage area, which has a berm on it. And so, and that, the volume of containment is much greater. Um, so we, we've got a, a very nice design to prevent any type of, uh, a loss of containment is what I would say.
And it's inside the building. So if it goes, it's going to go inside the building.
Okay. Um, and I was just re-reading the numbers here. It says, um, type in maximum storage quantities per the license application, flammable liquids, 880 gallons, combustible liquids, 380 gallons, flammable gases, 390 cubic feet. So that's what you're applying for, not what you already have?
That should be what we already have. Is part of that application package was a copy of the current license. Uh, but there is an additional, the, the actual application has the, the quantities listed.
Okay, so I'm reading the old things. So the new things are, what are the new? Uh, there's just a lot to go through and, uh, so the new numbers are more like, we.
So if I may, um, so on the, the application, right, so flammable liquids will be 2,000 gallons. Uh, combustible liquids will be 500 gallons, flammable gases will be 2,000 cubic feet and flammable solids will be 11 pounds.
Okay.
And just wanted to add to this as well, that the, the, the reason why the license is needed in terms of, in the context of these amounts is because, um, in the Mass General Laws, Chapter 148, which is the Fire Prevention Laws, as well as in our Fire Code for the State 527 CMR, any address, any property that stores more than 793 gallons indoors of flammable liquids is required to hold a license for storage. And the license is held in this case by the owner of the property. And so, so Brienne is on the call with us. So she's with CBRE, so she is the owner's representative for the property. So, and the way this works is once the, the license is in place, as has been for a number of years, um, Aspen as the tenant then applies to the Northborough Fire Department for annually, by the way, for a storage permit. So the license is sort of the umbrella that covers the property and the, it's, it's actually a land license by definition. And then as the tenant, Aspen, once that license is in place, they can go to Northborough Fire, which they do, um, annually. And they have to hold as a tenant, a storage permit.
Okay. And just one more question. Does the fire department inspect every year or at some point? Just like, do people get to see all these good storage facilities? Chief?
Yeah, chief.
Yeah, we, we inspect as needed. So, uh, if, if we have concerns over they're bringing any product in or if they're, if, uh, as, uh, as Rachel said, we get copies of all of their plan. So we, I review the plans. My hazmat, uh, uh, expert reviews the plans. If we have a question about it, we'll go out, we'll inspect, we'll make sure the berms are intact, you make sure the, uh, the explosion doors, if they are intact, we do all that. So.
So if we, if we approve this, you would, uh, would you go inspect after?
We've already, we've already been out, we're, we're in the process already of making sure. Or we would even entertain the idea of permitting additional stuff. Already been out there looking.
Okay, thank you.
Julianne, you got a question?
Um, so this is probably for Rachel. Um, how often does OSHA pop in or DEP?
Um, they have not been at that site since I've been there. So they haven't been out there for the last two years. However, you know, we have regular filings with both those agencies. I will say not with, well, we do have something going into EPA July 1st. Um, it's a federal report that all of our locations, um, submit or it's a memo to file. Um, so it's more so, we have stuff going into DEP and OSHA. So, um, we have regular filings. Um, you know, OSHA, either if you, it depends on your risk and liability at the site, right? If you're on their radar or not. Um, fortunately, because we haven't had anything go on at the facility, um, they don't have an impetus, there's not an impetus to come in. Um, and one of the things that OSHA would come in your facility for is do you have a lot of injuries? We don't have a lot of injuries. Um, and we do all, obviously all of our filings on time. Um, we haven't had any major incidences. And so we keep up with all the things we need to keep up with. Um, and we have good relationships with the state and local regulations and requirements. So that helps to, to keep us in management, but I have not had, um, OSHA or EPA, um, in that facility. I think, uh, DEP was in there a couple of years before, maybe a year before I started.
Yep. They, they came out for a, uh, and it's, it was basically a surprise inspection.
Yeah.
We did remarkably well. We got kind of the, the gold star of the day. They had no findings. And so our, our programs are, are well organized and, and solid.
What are the hours of the facility? Or is it seven days a week or eight hours a day, five days a week? What is, what are the hours?
Primary operating times would be between probably six in the morning and six at night, uh, during, during the week. And rarely would you have anybody on the weekends. We don't, we don't do active work on the weekends unless there's more than one person available for safety reasons. And so it's fairly rare that anything that has. And so it's fairly rare that anything that has to do with chemistry or processing is going on. There might be people in doing some paperwork or uh doing some measurements with instruments. So we don't really have a, you know, there there is no buildings locked and people can't get in policy. Uh it is locked, of course, and only employees can get in, but uh there is no formal working hours. But I think the primary would be six to six uh five days a week.
Okay. George, you you started to describe that that what your, one of your major projects now is to. Um improve lithium batteries that are used in cars and whatnot. So so you mentioned that one of the problems with them is is fire, correct?
Yes.
Uh so this makes my imagination say, these experiments must be a little hazardous. Could you describe that a little bit and?
Sure. You know, as a scientist and a former former professor, I will, I will agree with you that uh, you know, chemistry and materials. A lot of these things can be very dangerous, and so that's why people go to school for so long and, right? They train and do apprenticeships in order to understand uh how these things work. The reason that the current generation of lithium ion batteries is particularly dangerous is that they use. Flammable liquids or combustible liquids inside of the battery packs themselves. And so the potential to catch on fire is there. Now, remember, you're charging up a vehicle. Uh these things can discharge all at once if there's a short, uh you know, so all of the energy that's stored in the battery can basically come out. In a very short period of time, which can cause those liquids to catch on fire or to overheat. More uh more precisely, which then can cause them to do a runaway and then catch on fire. The the current generation of batteries in in the United States and pretty much worldwide is a is a little too focused on driving range. So oh, I want to have five hundred miles or six hundred miles of driving range. That forces the chemists and the material scientists and the engineers to design systems. That are pretty much on the edge of any type of safe operation. These materials are basically unstable. Uh they are being charged at voltages which are very high. The the materials within there are the organic solvents that can burn, so there is some inherent danger to them. The type of work that we're trying to do uh at Aspen on the battery side. Is to deliver a little bit more energy range, but not in the areas that are the unstable uh compounds that I was talking about. So we're we're looking at a couple of things. One of them is uh called lithium iron phosphate, which is at a a much safer battery type system. And the other one is trying to replace graphite in the uh the anode of the batteries. Uh that does put some silicon metal in there to give it a little bit more uh energy. But there's no reason for these things to be used at uh very high voltages in the future, is what I'm looking at. Um but our primary focus on battery safety is really in these thermal insulation materials, which are to prevent. Uh the the cataclysmic kind of domino effect of what happens when a when a battery cell goes bad. And when that goes bad, it can eat the entire car with fire. And I don't know if any of you had seen the news. Uh this a few months ago, where an entire ship going across the ocean. Caught on fire with like four thousand cars in it and they all went down to the bottom of the. You know, because they couldn't put out the fires, you know, they had to abandon the ship. So these are uh inherently dangerous materials. But we're not working on systems that are like that, and what we're trying to do is we're trying to focus on battery safety and to design better. Materials uh less expensive, more efficient, and hopefully uh the marketplace will not demand. The kind of the six hundred mile battery pack, you know, maybe people can deal with three hundred miles or something. I know I don't, you know. I don't have to uh drive six hundred miles very often, so uh between I, between a fill up at the gas station.
That was a really clear explanation, thank you. So so that leads me to ask the question. When you change projects, say you're going to work on something entirely different. Um does the town get apprised of that?
No. It I think if we do anything significant, Rachel, you can probably uh add to this. Uh as the chief said, if we bring in something new, if we're bringing in something that's not within our permits. Uh then we do inform the town. If we're talking about. Uh small experiments at the laboratory bench in our uh in our in our laboratory ventilation hoods. Uh we we change chemistries, we do uh discovery experiments and research in particular. Where you look at questions at a fundamental level, you're trying to answer, you have ideas and you're trying to answer. Uh whether they are feasible or not by designing experiments and carrying them out. If we were to inform the town on every experiment that we did, I'm pretty sure there would be a bit of a logjam. Uh on the bureaucracy side. For instance, we we probably do hundreds of experiments a week. Uh that may have some some amount of uniqueness to them. But we as a business, uh I think we're focused on areas of chemistry and not just anything goes. As I mentioned, we tend to work with ethanol or with these. Kerosene like uh solvents when we're doing things. And that means that we're somewhat limited in our universe, so we do small differences in our experiments. A lot of them are very uh disciplined and statistically oriented. Uh to develop new products, to to optimize things, to to change process conditions slightly. Uh we tend not to go way outside the pale. Um but as i- in a research and development laboratory, it is not, it is certainly not uncommon for people to do things that are hazardous. And that's again, where you get all the training and why we have great colleagues in our environmental safety and health. Operation who they evaluate uh any changes that we make. They they basically give us permits, they they help keep us safe and and together, everybody owns safety in our. In our building. I mean, it's it's uh as I like to say to my colleagues. The most important thing is make sure that your colleagues get to go home at the end of the day to see their families, right? And so safety is a very serious thing, and and the last thing you want is for people to get hurt in our operation or our neighbors to be hurt. Or for a an incident to happen in the town. I mean, you you. You provide us a place to do our business and I think it is up to us to be uh highly responsible and safe and be compliant with all the laws.
Yeah, and and that was great, George, and and I'll add to that with what he was talking about. Anytime we purchase equipment, whether it's expense or capital, anytime we decommission equipment, anytime we move equipment. And and that's going on right now, literally, we already have equipment and we're just moving it from point A to point B. We require that the organization does something called a management of change. So they have to go through an actually detail, are we having contractors do the work, are we having? You know, our facilities or maintenance group do the work and also included in there not only is the safety piece, but also the environmental piece. Because what he was talking about, you know, do I go to the fire department or not? What I'm looking through as we are buying equipment, moving equipment. Are we adding or removing any environmental risk or liability to our portfolio? So that's where I will look at and ask questions about, okay, we're buying a new piece of equipment, are we generating new waste? Are we discharging anything to the environment? Are we putting any new air emissions into the environment? Because that might change our existing permits, or do we need amendments or updates to things? So that's how the process flows, and we do this at all of our locations. Because it gives us, it's the gateway to for us deciding what is our risk, what is our liability, not only to the community, but to the employees. And what do we need to do about that? Do we need, again, to amend permits? Do we need different training? Do we need new policies, new procedures? But that is what we do, you know, like I said, in the event that we buy equipment, whether it's capital or expense or we move equipment. We take equipment down because that's, again, that's our, that's our, you know, our gate to what we're going to do and how we're going to assess.
Thank you.
Yep.
Oh, Scott, go ahead.
You just uh follow up, so uh in terms of containers, uh you know, and and going to two thousand gallons for for liquids. Uh two thousand cubic feet for gases, you said the largest container on the liquids, like the fifty five gallon drum. What are what are the cylinder sizes like for the gases?
She's, I don't know how much, I guess it depends on the gas, they are a, they're basically a five foot cylinder, maybe nine inch, ten inches in diameter. So they're basically standard.
Cellulars that we see.
Right, T sized cylinders would be the largest cylinder that we would have, yeah.
And those are typically between two hundred and fifty cubic feet to three hundred cubic feet of stored gas.
Excellent, thank you. And then maybe this, this might be a question for for Rachel or or Chief Parenti. Um so then kind of put the the increase in perspective for us, you know, uh. Are there are there different procedures and plans and reporting and inspection requirements at threshold levels? So if you got to ten thousand gallons, twenty thousand gallons, what what are like the ranges? And are we still on kind of like the smallest range of reporting and inspection?
I can certainly answer part of that. Um so Massachusetts right now is the only state that, in addition to the storage permit. That Aspen holds as a tenant, um they're also required and they hold a processing permit. So this is in section sixty point eight of our fire code. Uh it's been in effect for, wow, probably almost twelve years now. And so annually, um Aspen renews their process permit as well as their storage permit. And to your question about scale and size. So the the categories of the permit for processing are related to the size of the equipment. And the vessel size, so processes that are that are running, you know, anything up to sixty gallons in size. Um can be regulated by what we call a category two. Processing permit, but the minute that you cross over and you go to sixty one gallons. In that range up to three hundred gallons, that's covered by category three. Um also, if you're a high hazard use per the building code, which is a whole other topic. You automatically kick in category three, which is a, you know, the next tier up in requirements of reporting and and process safety. So um there's this extra layer that Massachusetts has added in um for the processing permit.
And and so in in this increase, have we crossed those categories? Are we still within the same category?
Um Aspen is still within category two.
Okay, thank you.
For processing size.
Couple of process questions, um first one probably is for Chief Parenti. Um are there, how how does this license application compare to existing licenses and related permits? For other businesses in town, is this, uh we have others of this size, is this much larger or in the same range?
We have some that are much larger and some that are much smaller. We have another R and D uh facility in town that has a whole lot. Uh a much broader range of chemicals that they keep. Uh which makes our work again, trying to track and trying to make sure that we then permit them every year. So we do have some that are bigger and some that are smaller, but we we we're very lucky in that all of our community partners keep us very well apprised and send us spreadsheets. So if you look at the application, it says two thousand gallons of, but we know specifically how much of each specific product. And where it's kept, and that's important to understand as well, it's not all, it's not a two thousand gallon tank, it's sitting in the middle of their uh uh of their. Areas, and that's actually what John, I'm sure, could have, and you can have so much per. Eight or or I'm gonna lose the word.
Per control area.
Thank you, per control area. I never just read it today, uh so so that's all involved in that as well.
Thanks, chief. Um the other process question, um I did drive around the the building uh to just familiarize myself with it. And I saw that there are other tenants in the same building. I'm just curious if, you know, as part of the public hearing process or as part of the license application. Whether the other tenants in the same building are notified um of this application. I don't know who's best to answer that.
I believe best answer to that is die, but I do believe. And do you know for sure? If I I I'd have to look at the email and see how she sent it out, but not.
Is there a question who gets notified?
The question, the question is whether other tenants in the same building have been notified.
They're notified.
Because they're butters.
Director Butters and anybody across from the facility is notified by law.
That's what I assumed, but wanted to verify. Um thank you. Any other questions from the board for either the applicant or for staff before we open it up to uh to public, Julian?
Um, yeah, so so if we're on process questions. Is it, would it be prudent to have groundwater weigh in on this? Our groundwater committee?
If I may to the chair, just so groundwater did review uh a similar process in twenty nineteen. And the town engineer and the building inspector did make the determination and the groundwater committee made determination that. Uh that it was significantly under the original permitting limit, the original permitting limit, special permit limit was seventeen thousand. Uh so um so in twenty nineteen, groundwater did review this, they were looking at, I think at the time, fifteen hundred uh gallons. And at that time, groundwater felt that it was, since it was with, well within the special permit limit that uh that they did not take any action. And that's a matter of record.
Thanks, John.
And what about Board of Health?
The Board of Health doesn't have any role, any licensing role.
Uh I I understand they don't have a licensing role, but do they, do they ever comment on something like this? I remember another facility in town with hazardous um waste and and they, it went before the Board of Health.
Hmm, I I don't know what the specific uh issue was or whether or not they had a licensing role, but no, they generally, they they do not.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, um oh, Jason.
Not very good at positioning my hand within view of the camera.
That's fine, thank you.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. Um just going back to the um the permitting underground water, I just guess I want to clarify that. Are we saying that there is a special permit already in effect at higher capacities than what is being proposed here?
That's my understanding from the building inspector and the town engineer, yes.
Okay, and so that special permit was reviewed and approved some time ago. Um with the expectation of having higher volumes and materials. And now this increase is still within the limits of of that original. Special.
Yes.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Any other questions before we open up to the public? I don't see any hands. Okay, members of the public, if you have any questions or comments you'd like to add at this time, please raise your virtual hand. I see one from uh Carrie Martnik, I will press the allow to talk button and you'll be on audio. Carrie, go ahead, identify yourself, please.
Hello, Carrie Martnik, sixteen Hemlock Drive. I assume you can hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you fine, thank you.
Okay, great. Um I have several questions and I don't expect answers necessarily this evening. But I was hoping the board could keep them in mind and perhaps follow up if there's an opportunity. Um having not seen the full materials, uh some of these may be answered inherently, so that's fine, I at least wanted to put them out there though. Um question was, so if they were, at the time, they had the earlier permits, when they had a reduced level. Were they decommissioned? And if so, is this an expansion of use? If this is an expansion of use, do they need a special permit or an amendment to the original permit? What are the chemicals and were they already approved in the two thousand and two special permit? Since we're twenty years later, do these chemicals need further review? Often with research and new findings, acceptable chemicals and levels change, are they still all within the same acceptable limits? Has groundwater deemed they're not detrimental to the water supply? And do they need to come back? Uh I think this question is already asked about coming back to groundwater. Um I would say encourage board, the board to review the groundwater minutes from February twenty nineteen. Their recommendation was based on the application at the time, and the special permit wasn't necessary because the expansion of ethanol was still within the limits. There's also a question, we're going back to the ZBA, again, this is the application at the time. Um with it being a new application in twenty twenty two, I think it's important to take a look at that and review. Um it has a new storage, been re-reviewed and approved as acceptable, is there a contingency plan for leaks? What kind of annual inspections will occur and how will the board select and condition them if they're outside of the special permit process? And and this very well may be something you can do within this licensing process, I'm not as familiar with it. Um is there a new site plan? Does it need to be reviewed? Uh have, and I got the, I heard the question about a butters being notified, I heard it was tenants in the building. But I'm wondering what was the radius of the notification for a butters? Um and is that list of a butter has been made available in the packet? And I think that was it. Those are my questions. Again, I don't expect answers this evening. I I can email them as well, I know I had quite a few. But um those are the things when I first saw this on the agenda that I thought I'd bring up. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Does anyone want to address uh any of the questions or or comments before I bring the next person in? Okay, uh next up is uh Lisa Micali. Lisa, you're in.
Thank you, uh thank you for taking the call. Um I'm just um again, as the resident in uh with large. Would like to uh hope that you don't make a decision tonight, but do a little bit more research and. large, would like to hope that you don't make a decision tonight, but do a little bit more research and it certainly looks to be quite extensive and it does deal with some groundwater issues and there's a lot to be seen here. And I think there's a lot more questions that need to be answered. And I'm sure you'll do a great job. Thank you very much.
Okay, and next I have Bill Pierce. I'll bring you in, Bill. Billy, you should be in now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for for opening this up. I just have one quick comment or question. I don't know if this was the case when the original permit was granted, but the area around that facility is part of SA Farm, which is a chapter sixty one agricultural and horticultural deemed by the state. So I just want to make sure if any permit changes need to be made from when that was first instituted to now, that those, I I know the whole thing with SA Farm and everything else. I live at three sixty seven Whitney Street. But it it is still technically a chapter sixty one land. And so we sort of have to treat it as such. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone like to address any of those comments or questions? We open it back up to the board. Okay, members of the board or or staff, does anybody have anything they'd like to add at this time? Julian.
Um, well, I I just want to say that the the the, for people who follow our agenda, there was, there was an error when the agenda came out on Thursday. And I don't believe that was corrected until midday on Friday. And therefore, I think that in all fairness, we should talk about extending this public hearing.
A question for the applicant, are there any significantly adverse situation if we continue the hearing until our next meeting in the middle of July?
We are, we're operating under the current the current license and permits, and we will continue to do so as long as we have to, so.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments on that? Again, that was a typographical issue at at our end that, you know, if if we do continue the hearing, that doesn't, shouldn't mean anything adverse relative to any final decision that we'll make on the application. But we we want to make sure we give the public opportune time to 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 chime in and and ask any questions that they feel appropriate. Jason, did I see your hand go up?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just briefly, I guess on this, on this particular point of at least some uncertainty with respect to some of the other process, town process and approvals and permits and everything. I think people probably would be more comfortable if more of that information was available and and clarified, so that there isn't any question. In my mind, I'm listening to this information tonight and feeling pretty good about what I'm hearing. But I think there are some other process questions that people are going to want answers to.
Yeah, I I agree. I, you know, we are, we are, the board is just seeing this information, you know, we saw this all for the first time on Friday and saw about the agenda item first first Thursday, thinking it was a decrease. And then we learned afterwards that it was an increase. These things happen. We all love to educate ourselves about the the technical and chemistry specifics of what's going on here. And if other boards and committees want to chime in, you know, I I agree, it does not sound like there's anything mandating groundwater. You know, formally recommend or or don't recommend anything here. But if they want to review this between now and our next meeting, that would be, I imagine up to the Chair of Groundwater. They could do so. And if any other boards and committees wanted to chime in, that's fine. I would just want to make sure that we receive any input from anybody else by the time our next meeting begins. Anybody have anything else they'd like to to add at this time? In which case I will entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman, I move this board. I move the board vote to continue the public hearing for the application by GNI nine Forbes Whitney LLC to amend the existing above ground flammable and combustible storage license for premises located at thirty Forbes Road to the July eighteenth twenty twenty two meeting of the Board of Selectment at seven P M. So that the board may receive and review additional information regarding the particular use of the property in connection with the materials that will be stored at the property.
Is there a second? Okay, motion made by Julian and seconded by Jason. Any other discussion? Okay, Julian, how do you, Julian, do you have a?
I do have one more question. Can maybe some, a staff person can advise this on if this is a situation where a peer review would be helpful.
I don't think we can immediately.
I mean, I don't think it rises to that level. This is pretty straightforward, but.
It's not unusual for us to get applications to update licenses or permits. I don't, I mean, I but I really don't believe that this right.
Given that we're staying within the same processing category, this increases is not as significant as as would warrant additional reviews.
I I agree. That it's why I asked the question about similar licenses and upon learning that, you know, what I suspected that we have some businesses in town with much greater quantities of some of these things. Peer review process probably isn't required. Okay, if there are no other questions from the board, Julian, how do you vote? This is again on continuing the public hearing, but I, Scott. Kristen.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
I also vote I. The public hearing is continued to our meeting on July eighteenth, two thousand twenty two at seven P M. Thank you very much, everybody. Talk to them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, well, let let our guests exit out. Thank you. We did get started a couple of minutes late and neglected to mention that so that we could begin the public hearing as close to on time as possible. We pushed off the public comment that was at the beginning, typically now at the beginning of our agenda, so we'll do that now. And I will say this is our first meeting since we decided at our last meeting to have more of a context aware version of public comments. So the public comments that are on the agenda are for items not on our agenda. So if you have any suggestions for a future agenda topic or something we've discussed recently, but but are not discussing this evening, this would be the time for that. And what we will do is during any other agenda item, if a member of the public wishes to speak up, just raise your hand while we're on that item. And I'll recognize you before the end of that topic and certainly before there is any vote on that topic. It's not going to be in a formal public hearing method where I'm going to ask for public input on every item. Just members of the public, just raise your hand when you want, but but we have one hand up for items not on our agenda right now. Lisa, I'll bring you in.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Thank you very much, Lisa Micali thirteen Maple Street. At the last BO S meeting, I did ask three questions during public comments, and I was told they'd be answered by tonight. I didn't receive any emails in relationship to any of them. I'm just going to read them quickly again so that they're on the minutes. The first one was certain RFQs are under the purview of the selectmen. Do they view, edit and approve these RFQs before they get posted? Two, do the selectmen see monthly reports such as progress or complaint and resolution from the department heads, all of the department heads? And three, I would like to make a request and revisit and rescinding of the department reporting policies set up in July eighteenth, two thousand sixteen whereby the administrator evaluates the fire and police chief. They are all equal on the org chart, and this policy goes against the charter. So I would like that addressed at some point. Thank you so much.
I apologize. I'm the one who committed to getting you answers to those, and I have some of that information, but not all of it. So I apologize for for that. And I do promise we'll get back to you very soon on those answers. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you much.
Are there any other items of comment for things that are not on our agenda? If not, we will continue to report. Scott.
Oh, great. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, a quick question for you, Mitch. I know our liaison assignments that help us, you know, know what to report on. You, we we know individually what we have, but we don't have the document that lets us know who else is covering each. So if if I could put that on your to do list, just.
You're absolutely correct. I I, everyone knows what what you're responsible for, but the consolidated version did not get sent over to to die and the rest of the board.
Yeah, and that's great. So then if I, you know, see something really cool, cultural council, I know who to, yeah, talk to. Great.
Take care of that this week. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to thank Chief Liver for the earlier report we received today. I guess, you know, there's some incident categories that are very critical sensitive. So just thanks to your officers and the work they do, Chief. We appreciate the the all the work that's done and and those those sobering items that are in the report someone's.
Thank you.
In terms of liaison assignments, the Board of Health had a meeting on the fourteenth. They covered materials like pool inspections, lifeguard requirements for those pools. We've seen the impact statement from North Court associated with that. Vaccine rates, especially with the the June ninth vaccination, were were quite high for the area. And at the time of the meeting, they were preparing for under five year vaccines. You know, since then, that approval has come through. And as part of that work, they completed a survey of pediatricians in the area, knowing what their plans are for vaccination to help form what we might do as a town. And I think you saw an infographic published earlier today on on some of the things about the pediatric vaccine. Reminder that free antigen tests are available at the Health Department, the Library and the Senior Center. If they're temporarily out, just means they're restocking. But in looking at, if I jump to the next day where the Greater Borough's partnership met, a lot of those remaining funds for fiscal year twenty two that are expiring are going towards medical supplies and they're stockpiling those. Any remaining grant money that can be rolled over into twenty three is is happening there. Staffing for the Health Department is is in great shape with Isabel Ari, epidemiologist, increased to full time. Two new year interns, and it was one of the interns, Ariella, I think, that did the surveying on the pediatricians in the area and their vaccine plans. So welcome to those folks. At the time of the meeting, we're also interviewing for Health Inspector. That hire has been made, met Mike last week. So welcome board, Mike Seager, as a new health inspector. Conservation Commission covering a lot of applications for subject systems, tree removals and other work. Those are approved or continued as they go through their work. One kind of specific guideline came up with respect to Edmund Hill, and I believe the individual camping there has been issued a citation and referred to services. So as far as I know, that that scenario has been addressed appropriately by by town staff and services. Then finally, thanks to everybody who came out and enjoyed the great weather on the twenty second for the Be Well North Borough kickoff, judging by the line of families in front of each of the events and inflatables. I think everybody had a great time. It was great to have a little bit of music in the background and representation across the board on great kickoff to the center. And I saw a lot of smiling faces. So thanks to everybody that came out for that. And that ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Kristen, you have anything to report on?
I do. Thank you, Mister Chair. My first thing on my report is a question for DPW Scott. Um, is he there behind his black square? Hi, Scott. So I'm sorry if I missed your email about this, but I thought the safety zone flashing lights went off in the summer. Am I wrong about that?
The the motion that was made by the Board of Selectmen and approved included the the time of the daily operations for weekdays. It did not include any termination during non-school seasons, whether it be summer, February, April vacation.
Yeah.
So that was not part of the motion. The meeting included a reevaluation in the coming months to see how it operated with or whether the timing was warranted. You know, the extended afternoon into early evening hours. I haven't seen that posted on the agenda for discussion. So as of now, the lights are operating in accordance with the actions taken by the board.
Okay, thanks. I I I remember you saying that you could turn them off with a, like it's digital, so. I, but we we should have made it more specific as far as dates go, definitely. So maybe we need to revisit that, but. Yeah, so sorry, everyone driving down Barlow Street with flashing lights in the summertime. Sorry about that. So okay, and then I wanted to say thanks to everyone who attended virtually or in person our our meeting on, when was that? A Thursday a couple of weeks ago. It was, we got a lot of really good suggestions. And I look forward to discussing all the options we have. Um, I would like to say at the end of this lovely June, happy Pride Month. And I hope the cultural council event that happened on the, what was the date of that? The
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth. I had to miss that because I was working. But I hope that was a lovely event, and I hope we hear about that from either Julian or Mitch or someone else who was there. And my quote for tonight is live for each second without hesitation. That's by Elton John. Thank you.
Thanks, Christian. Julian, do your reports.
Thank you, Mister Chair. And yes, I will report on the Culture Fest. It was a big success. Great turnout. Everybody seemed to enjoy the music, the art, the food. I do have to say, this group worked so hard to put it all together and make the common look festive. Even challenged by some pretty gusty winds at one point, but they they pulled it off. And I think everybody had a great time. So everyone's now looking forward to their next event. And unfortunately, I was unable to attend the Be Well or the Music event over the weekend, but I understand that congratulations are in order there for successful events. I I should report on White Cliffs, who met just this past week, and we have hired Kirk and Company to help us find a partner for the project. It was, I think it was pretty much a unanimous decision. And and our next meeting will be on July twentieth, mostly for housekeeping items. And then I just have one request. And then, and it sort of came up with all these events and some, you know, that we're using the town common again. Is how would it work to get public parking signs at our public parking lots in town? We have precious little parking as it is, and people don't know where it is. So if we could get signs on those couple of lots, I that that would be helpful.
John, did you have any? Or I'm sorry, Scott.
To the Chair, Julian, are you referring to Trailblazer signs from the event location? Directing people to the parking or just a sign at Asmit that says parking?
A sign at Asbet, a sign on Lake Street, a sign the one near on Pier Street. You know, anywhere where we have public parking, it's not, it's not well posted.
Okay. I say, I'll take, I'll take a look and come up with some recommendations.
Thank you. Okay, that ends my report.
Thank you, Julian. Jason.
I also attended the Cultural Council event on the Town Common, and I agree with Julian. It was a a success despite some. A success despite some windy and gusty conditions out there. Uh so. Uh appreciate all the uh uh people who turned out to enjoy it and all the uh vendors who uh had their booth set up and uh. Were conducting the activities. Um. Uh and I believe that will conclude my report.
Thank you, Jason. I've got a couple of things. Uh as always, I want to thank everyone who emails uh information to us between our meetings. Uh we received quite a number of emails uh with input for ARPA. We received uh requests to uh start a Traffic and Safety Committee. We, uh as was mentioned before, an email about lifeguards. I got an email about uh residential land use issues and a few other things. Um I want to congratulate a a business owner in town that is familiar with many of us us here, Don Rand. Um had her fiftieth uh dance uh recital at uh from her dance studio. My daughters are are students there and and we attended that. Uh we call her. Don Ran, former member of the board, they refer to as Miss Don, and congratulations to her on on that amazing achievement. I attended the Culture Fest at the Town Common and uh it was fantastic, as have been echoed here. Uh one of the things I was looking forward to was one last look at the doors that the Cultural Council had uh put up earlier on at Ellsworth McAfee Park. And they did an auction at the end to raise money a little bit for both the Cultural Council and for uh for the artists that participated in those. You may notice behind my shoulder over here, um I was the lucky winning bidder of the North Road Door. Uh bidding against at least one other person. It was very fierce right until the end. Uh and I'm happy to have have taken it home and I've got to find a find a good permanent home for it, which may not be in my house. You may see it at the library or somewhere else in the future. Um I want to make note that the um one of the e- some of the emails that we got. Earlier about a month ago were about concerns with the town election being held at Melican coinciding with while school was in session. Um the school committee took that onto uh into themselves and for next school year have scheduled um school vacation days. They're really professional development days on all uh anticipated town elections, including the primary at the beginning of September. And they had already accounted for the November uh statewide election. They also added in um our annual town election next May. Um so for the coming year, that issue is resolved. Um but I imagine we'll be uh we'll be speaking with them sometime uh in coming months. To uh to see if there's uh any long-term uh way to deal with that. Um and I do want to make note that the current state law that I referred to at the beginning of the meeting. Allowing us to meet remotely, uh the current law expires before our next meeting. Uh goes until July fifteenth. The Senate has put into their budget proposal to extend that until uh I think it's the end of calendar twenty twenty-three. Um the House has not yet done that, uh and they haven't finalized the budget at the state level. Um of course, the budget is supposed to be done in the next three days and we'll see whether that happens. Um uh everyone is telling me and I'm, John, I know you've heard the same thing, that the state wants to continue the remote meeting option. Um hopefully, they will do so by our next meeting and come up with some resolution to that issue. But there is a chance that if they don't, or if there's an overlap, that uh that we may end up meeting in person on the eighteenth. Um the Be Well North Bro, as everyone said, was was a fantastic event. And um uh I heard a number of people s- say that they hope this is the first annual um end of school celebration along those lines. Um not to put any pressure on all of the town staff that put a lot of work into making that happen. But it was a lot of fun for the adults and it was obviously a lot of fun uh for the kids. And my last item is um as the town prepares for Apple Fest. The um Rotary Club uh is uh starting to advertise for um participation in the street fair. That takes place on the Saturday of Apple Fest. I think it's the seventeenth. Hold on, let me make sure I get the date correct. Yes, Saturday, September seventeenth will be the street fair for Apple Fest. If uh your organization or your business would like to have a table at the Apple Fest Street Fair. Uh please email the Rotary Club of Northborough at gmail dot com. Um or just search for the Rotary Club of Northborough online and you will you will find them. Uh that ends my reports. Um John, did you have anything to offer at this time?
Uh yeah, just a couple of things. One, I I do want to echo um on a Be Well Northborough kickoff meeting. The tremendous amount of wor- work that staff put in. We have estimates of upwards of a of a thousand people making their way through during the course of the. The four hours of the event and um uh Jen Brunel from Library, our Library Director, Kristen Black, our Health Agent. And um and Ally Lane, our Rec Director, uh really were the ones that did the lion's share of the work. But of course, police fire were there. We had staff from all departments and I I just have to say. It was one of the one of the more uh most proud moments I've I've had as a town administrator being there. Because um we've done so much related to COVID that we've had to do. That has been about preserving life and safety and and necessary. And this was uh the first COVID-related thing that we did that was about building community, getting people out of isolation. Getting folks back to that sense of of community and having fun uh at a at a large uh scale that covered all departments. And uh it was a it was a huge success and um I'm just really proud of the staff and just want to thank them publicly for all the hard work. Uh we got tons of uh really positive feedback. So it was a it was a fantastic event. And uh as we quickly said, boy, this would be great if we could do this every year. It's something we'll look at. Um it was an incredible amount of work. Um but uh but again, it was so well received by the community. I think that's something we'll need to take a look at. Uh the other thing I did want to mention, uh there was a request Mitch had made about uh the auditor. So uh our audit report is up on the webpage where it has been, uh but we have not had our new auditor in to present to the board. So we've been able to confirm that uh the auditor will be in at your July eighteenth meeting to do a brief presentation and answer any questions. Uh and again, this is uh this is our new auditor uh from uh uh from a firm that we have not used before. So it's it's it'd be interesting to see their uh their fresh take on uh on the finances at town. So but that is confirmed for the eighteenth. Thank you.
Thanks, John. All right, uh next up, we have approval of end of year transfers uh in our agenda packet. There are a list of a few end of year transfers. John, do you want to give us a quick summary?
Sure. So you know, every year uh it really, it's it it comes down to uh winter. Uh I blame Scott Sharptier, our DPW Director, if uh if we run short, uh because really it's it depends on what happens. Uh what kind of winter we experience, he chimes in here. Um so uh what we do uh in Northborough. Our our practice has been to cover any any uh shortages that uh come up due to unforeseen circumstances. We want to cover those within the current fiscal year. So um. Snow and ice is one is the only really operational uh budget line item that you can legally uh overexpend. And that's because obviously you can't uh predict what Mother Nature is going to throw at you. Oftentimes, uh we see blizzards or storms. We'll get federal reimbursement or state reimbursement. Um but sometimes that stuff will, those reimbursements will trail uh upwards of a fiscal year later. Um so in your uh in your packet, you have a memo from Scott uh uh talking about the. Wait one second, uh just the roundup. Uh we keep you updated as the year goes by. So I know you're all aware that we had expended our full budget, our full budget snow and ice is four hundred thirty-seven thousand. And so we were over that by about a little more than a hundred and twelve thousand. It's actually not bad. Um and uh it moves around and bounces around each year. Uh what we do here is uh to be realistic. Uh once you increase your snow and ice budget, you can't then decrease it uh and be allowed to carry over if you exceeded. So that's state law. Uh so what we do is we take a a five or six year running average so that we're realistic. Uh believe it or not, there are years like last year where we come in under. Uh and then we seem to get on a tear where, you know, we have these terrible years where uh we have a lot of storms. And again, like I said, oftentimes if they're blizzards, significant storms, we do get reimbursement for those, but we have to cover them within the fiscal year. So our uh practice, it's not required, but our practice is always to deal with any uh overages within the current fiscal year. So the alternative would be if you don't do that, that you would kick the can and essentially add that tax impact to fiscal twenty twenty-three. So it it skews your numbers and doesn't give a good representation of when you incur the expenses. Uh so snow and ice is the uh lion's share of uh of the issue. Uh but we had a couple of other things that popped up this year and and I know I've kept you apprised of these as well. Uh one oh one Colburn Street was a structure fire. Uh the owner does did not. Uh it was incapable or unwilling to uh remove that structure. In very rare instances, the town uh has a legal authority to do that. Obviously, we don't want to because it's an unbudgeted item. Uh but one oh one Colburn Street uh was a little over seventy-one thousand dollars. We had to remove the structure and clean up the property. The town has since put a lien on that property, which means we will get our our uh payment through one of two ways. When the property is sold or uh if the property um that expense moves on to the tax bill. And if the owner is again unwilling or unable to pay it, property would go into tax title. So town has always made whole on these. The challenge is having to cover that unanticipated expense within a fiscal year. So it's an unbudgeted expense, but it's a public safety hazard. Uh so we needed to take care of that. Um we also had a uh situation with the our only custodian on the general government side. We have one custodian that that shared between police and town hall. Unfortunately, that individual was out on a long-term medical and so we had to bring in cleaning services clearly during COVID. It's critical uh that we maintain uh the sanitation of the buildings. Uh so we did have that uh that uh to deal with as well. And then uh last but not least, uh we've had uh in my twenty years, what is a an extraordinary uh year of litigation. Pertaining to um uh several planning board cases. Now, the board has been kept up to date on these. You've met an executive session to discuss them is uh the Guterres Company versus the Northport Planning Board. There's Isometric Operations Stairers, uh DBA Stairers versus the Northport Planning Board. Able Construction Incorporated uh versus the Northport Planning Board. Uh and then we have some ongoing outstanding uh bills that are coming in in the month of June pertaining to that. So our total town council bill is uh I'm sorry, budget is ninety thousand. Uh as long as I've been here, it used to be uh seventy-five or eighty thousand. I increased that to ninety thousand within the last fiscal year. Um but we are uh we are in need of a little over ninety-two thousand dollar transfer. Um based on these uh this litigation uh cases in our legal fund. So that's a um extraordinary um uh again, litigation that was not budgeted for, planned for. Um but needs to be addressed. So uh in total, um if you look at the memo, there's two things. Uh transferring, I I should back up. We always have in every fiscal year appropriations committee emergency reserve fund. And it's a hundred and seventy-five thousand. And so usually that is enough to deal with these unforeseen uh circumstances. Um but unfortunately, this year we had, like I said, a hundred and thirteen thousand snow and ice. And then uh about seventy-one thousand in uh emergency structure removal at mobile at one oh one Colburn Street. And that that essentially ate up the uh Appropriations Committee Reserve. So uh before you tonight, what we're uh suggesting or recommending is that we uh transfer from our health insurance budget. Which actually had a very good year uh in fiscal twenty twenty-two. As you know, we've done an excellent job of of managing our health insurance budget. Um and we always have a balance in there to deal with migration, people coming on to our on to our health insurance. Uh so uh the recommendation would be to transfer a hundred and fifteen thousand from the health insurance budget. To take care of the remaining costs for one oh one Colburn Street, the Town Hall Custodian uh coverage at twenty-eight thousand. And uh and then we need overall uh seventy-seven thousand transfer to take care of uh some of the litigation expenses. That we've uh we've experienced. So again, uh these are pretty routine uh year-end transfers. I'd say the only thing uh usually we're able to to contain these within the emergency reserve account. Uh but again, the planning board litigation is uh is the item that really pushed uh pushed us over this time. So um this is a process, uh Appropriations Committee Reserve, uh that's a simple vote by appropriations. But it's the uh additional transfer of a hundred and fifteen thousand year end. Uh that requires the Board of Selectmen as well as the Appropriations Committee to approve that. And that resolves everything for the for the current fiscal year. Uh and uh will have us wrap up the fiscal year. Uh I don't have the numbers, obviously. Uh we're not closed out yet. Uh we have another month, uh this month to wrap up. But I would anticipate we will finish out the fiscal year uh with a reasonable surplus uh in the black as we always do. Um but in these specific line items, we just need to move uh these funds around to uh to balance those out. So that's what's before you this evening.
Thanks, John. Any questions from the board? Julianne.
In the case of the legal fees, if if we win the cases, just do the. Those companies reimburse us?
No, no, that's highly unlikely. Um you know, you can make a case for uh, you know, recouping your legal fees. But uh that's a a very rare uh situation. I've I've yet to see that happen ever. Um but uh we'll, you know, we can, and if we can, we can make that uh, we can make that case. Um but it it's not likely.
Okay.
Uh Scott, did your hand, Scott?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um John, you had mentioned that coming into this budget year, you had increased the uh attorney's uh budget a bit. So I think I think you asked, answered what was going to be my question is is this is kind of a a singular event. Do we need to adjust the budget? Uh it seems like you've made some adjustment to anticipate a slightly higher fee. But we really don't, it doesn't sound like we need to do more than that. This is kind of a, or at least for this year is is out of the ordinary.
Yeah, well, I mean, we're hoping that uh the the bulk of this will resolve uh during this uh current uh during fiscal year. I mean, we have uh ninety thousand budgeted for twenty twenty-three. Um I I guess, you know, the you just never. I mean, you don't know i- in terms of uh litigation, that's uh up to the the cases that that come up. Um but this this is um extraordinary in terms of uh historically what we've uh. What we've encountered. Uh typically, we don't have overages in our uh legal budget. I I should say also, it's it's more complicated than just looking at the legal budget, uh depending on the nature of of the matter. Um for instance, if we have a building project and it's illegal expenses, we'll get charged that building project, especially if MSBA is going to reimburse for a portion of it. Um you know, if uh uh if it's a a personnel matter, uh those expenses might get. We get charged off to the personnel board account, in other words, in when we do like labor negotiations. So uh we try to maintain in that that legal budget is really just, you know, uh un- unanticipated expenses. Uh and and on a on a day-to-day basis, you know, we use legal counsel proactively. You know, we try to involve them in anything that might potentially lead to litigation so that we don't wind up in litigation. Uh once you do uh wind up in court, it gets very expensive very quickly and you know, you could see twenty, you know, twenty-five thousand dollar bills in a month. And uh when when litigation is active like we are right now in the Guterres case and moving into uh the Stairers case. Uh you're taking depositions, uh counsel is actively uh, you know, litigating in court. That that the expenses uh move up very qu- very quickly on that. In the case of the Guterres, uh you know, we've had to hire also um. Expert witnesses uh in terms of groundwater. Uh so so those expenses uh, you know, are in there as well. But um you know, hopefully, these will resolve themselves and and this isn't a um a long-term trend. Uh you know, if it is, then we'll have to budget accordingly to make sure that the resources are available. Uh but litigation specifically. Um legal, legal advice and and expertise uh is something we try to bring into meetings, as I said, proactively on the front end. If you're unable to resolve things, once you get into litigation, it's it's always expensive, which is why it's to be avoided if possible. Um sometimes it's not avoidable, so.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, John. Uh um any other questions from members of the board? Um John, are there um notable portions in that legal expense relative to the? The issue with uh with the sewer in Marlboro and and WRA or with SA Farm?
No, uh well, with in terms of, that was where I was saying, in terms of the uh litigation that we have with Marlboro. Those expenses are paid for by the Sewer Enterprise Fund, so they don't show up here. Uh so we have litigation, we have a lot of just land use um legal expenses in terms of consultation with counsel and so forth. There's a little bit of SA Farm uh expense in there, not much. And so forth. There's a little bit of S A Farm uh expense in there, not much. We don't really have uh that that litigation is sort of been uh. Uh on uh on hold. Um so uh but it's mostly just a little bit of uh. A lot of land use and a lot of uh little bits of, you know, we have a. Personnel matter uh something that we want to bounce off council before we take action. You know, we always, like I said, that the way to use town council is is um. In advance of the problem, uh once you what you what's the problems here and you're and you're in court, there's not a whole lot you gotta do. It it's it's gonna it's gonna run its course through, so.
Yeah, yeah, the only thing more expensive than using counsel before problems using counsel after the problem.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah. Um. There are no other questions from the board. We do have a couple of hands raised from the audience. I will bring in the first person, uh Lisa Micali. Um hold on, I lost your button for a second. Here we go, Lisa. You should be able to speak.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I have two two different groups uh I want to discuss. The one on one Colburn Street. Um there are a couple of things after reading some of the uh packet. That um we had an R F P that took care of removing the debris and repairing the right side of the house. Uh for thirty seven thousand two hundred and fifty eight. Wasn't including hazardous waste or or regulated materials because the um company doing it would not be responsible for that. So who did remove the hazardous waste? It'd be my first question. Second.
We had, well, right to the chair, I'll answer that question. We hired a L S P, a licensed site professional to oversee that process so that it was done correctly and thoroughly.
The second question is, um why the disparity um where it's thirty seven thousand two fifty eight, but in the. The memo, it's seventy one thousand five hundred and eighty seven.
Those total expenses. So there were uh expenses to remove the structure. There was expenses for, as I said, an L S P to make sure any hazardous materials removed. There was a contractor that came in and removed all of the trash in the back of the house. Because in addition to the structure that was uh burned, there were were complaints and uh and health code violations. So that was uh that was remediated, and then there are legal expenses, and so everything uh totals up to a little over seventy one thousand dollars. In the middle of the process, the owner uh uh requested a stay uh from our uh injunction. That delayed things, so we had a contractor that mobilized, and then the contractor had to demobilize, they had to remobilize. So all those expenses unfortunately are going to be borne by the owner. Um so it's it's a totality of all the expenses. To deal with the border health issues, the environmental issues, the structural issues. And uh when you remove something that's attached to a domicile, uh we're required to fix that so that the building envelope of that. Uh build of that uh structure is sound, that work had to be done as well. So that's the total is a little over seventy seventy one thousand.
Well, thank you for thank you for answering quickly. Um the fourth question is, has this been done before on any other site, uh residential site?
Yeah, I tore a building down several years back on Milk Porridge. I did one up on Green Street. Uh we only do it uh as a last resort. Uh it's usually as a result of some sort of a a structure fire. Uh or uh or an extreme uh situation. Uh but it's again, you know, we tried to work with property owners. If I have to do the work, I have to pay prevailing wages. So those that bill represents. You know, prevailing wages, uh a private homeowner or private sector uh individual could do this work much cheaper than we can. Um could we have to follow all the public procurement laws? Um so yeah, we've done it. I think I've done it uh four times in the nineteen years that I've been here.
Okay, um well, then that would would answer one of this other questions that I have, or how to set a precedent. The um the eight apartment house on Maple Street that caught fire recently uh lost one of the tenants in the fire, unfortunately. Also needs to be raised and the debris removed for health and safety reasons, and the owner passed away a few months ago. Um the building is sitting there and tarps flowing in the wind and everything else. How will that how will that piece of property be resolved?
Yeah, sure. So in those situations, uh if the structure isn't an immediate uh um. Public safety issue in in that it it could fall down. Uh so this structure uh has been inspected. It can, in theory, be rebuilt. Uh and fixed. Uh did not need to be removed immediately. Sometimes we have a fire and we'll have uh like the R and T fire in the center. The next day, we had a company out there removing the debris. There was clearly nothing left to be salvaged. So uh again, we try to work with the owners uh or the heirs and 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 give them uh some time to figure out what they're doing. Um so my understanding, and I have a meeting with the building inspector coming up to discuss this property specifically. Uh it's just to determine whether or not they're willing and able to to move forward, but there's a difference between a. Uh you know, and something that is unattractive and something that is a uh immediate public safety issue. I will just say this, when we go to court for these things, the court uh does not want the town removing uh people's homes or structures. And it is very uh sympathetic to in a property owner and will give them a. What can be excruciating amounts of time to uh to to remedy or fix a property. So um so that's the case with that.
All right, well, just one last comment about that. Um the one on one. Yeah, a homeowner in a residential neighborhood built a an illegal two base service garage on his residential property. Um I understand from the building inspector that they tried several times to get that taken care of and and it just didn't get taken care of. Resulting fire came, the town did pay for the fire crew to come out, and the demo company removed the debris and they rebuild the outside of the house, um remove the waste. But the uh the tax getting on a lien, there's already a a lien uh from two thousand nineteen taxes of over five thousand dollars. And the house has a homestead on it. So how are we going to really get any monies back on it? And I'm kind of surprised. I've never known that the appropriations committee reserve. Fund could be used for this sort of thing. Um.
Well, as I said, usually the appropriation reserve uh is um held to deal with uh unforeseen. Uh overages uh typically in snow and ice. That's how it historically is used. Uh and sometimes we use it to cover in the past some. Special education costs where, you know, a student moved in in the the. School committee or the school department didn't have funds for the uh for the required for the student. But in terms of the uh in terms of uh one on one Colburn Street, uh the town is uh. Has that property in tax title and is moving into foreclosure. Again, the last thing we want to do is uh take. Uh private property, we're not in that business. Uh so it is a lengthy process to do that. Uh and uh but that property is in tax title and is moving into foreclosure. Uh if at any point in time. Uh uh a homeowner or property owner. Uh wants to redeem their their property, even when you're all the way down well into foreclosure, the court will always let them do that if they have the funds. And again. We're not, we're not in the business of taking people's property. It is a absolute and literal last resort. So but the town will get its money. We always, we always do.
It sounds like a, it sounds like a private eye. We always get our man. Um alright, and then I have a couple of questions about the the planning board costs for their litigation. Um first was the uh neither one of the or one of all three suits have actually been settled. So um and it was taken up in um. Executive session, so I'm kind of surprised to see it being discussed now if the suits haven't been settled. Because when Anza was going on, no conversation could happen about Anza because it hadn't been settled yet.
Well, we're not, we're not discussing the suits themselves or the the pros and cons or the merits of our case. We're discussing. The budget that's necessary to support the legal expenses of those suits. That's the difference.
Okay, and then the other question I have is then what um. What are the legal fees that came from the lawsuit with the A A B and the subsequent appeal of their decision regarding the Aspet Park rebuild for the handicapped accessibility?
I'd have to look those up, but those costs were minimal. We went and met with the A A B in uh in Boston. Uh for a few hours and uh and a little bit of follow up after that. It wasn't, it wasn't, it they, it didn't, it never went to litigation. Uh the uh A A B uh decided that the town. It made more sense for us to work together, which was what we had proposed to begin with.
Alright, well, okay. Alright, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, we have one more hand up from uh Kerry Martin. And again, um this is for comments on the approval of year end transfers item. Kerry.
Hello, Kerry Martin, sixteen Hemlock Drive. Um also a member of the planning board. Um thus my comments. It would be interesting to see the um obviously, all the boards have lawsuits, so in terms of what breaks the camel's back, it would be interesting to see. What the lifetime cost of Anza Marlboro Sewer, the ADA compliance lawsuits are. Certainly, they're not um inexpensive, whether they come from different funds or not. It would be interesting to. Have a transparent breakdown of what the lifetime costs is of those suits and also the Z B A lawsuits, which um I think. Oftentimes falls in the hands of residents and we certainly hear residents, well, for Anza anyway, paying upwards of six hundred thousand dollars of their own money. So. Um no, it's a an expense for all. Um I'd also want to take this minute to suggest the board consider hiring a land use lawyer for the land use board so that we have the right expertise and perhaps that would help cut down on costs. And I also thought the comment about getting advice in advance was interesting is that's not uh truly the environment that I I feel has been fostered from my perspective. So I just wanted to weigh in on that and suggest a few things and and perhaps take a transparent look at all of our legal fees versus just one of the boards. Thank you for taking my comment.
Thank you, Kerry.
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman. So with regard to S A Farms and Anza, the town was made whole by the uh an earmark from the state for all those legal expenses. Um and uh as I said, the other uh the A B A cases was minimal, a few thousand dollars of of appearance and filing. Um and then uh it's just a smattering of of stuff across the board, and we we have discussed the issue of hiring a land use lawyer that has been done, so.
Yeah, I think um as those cases wind down, it may make sense for the board to uh sort of do a postmortem as far as the process goes and see if. And I know before my time on the board, some of that was discussed, um but to take another look afterwards and see if there's anything, just we as a town, all boards, staff, et cetera. Might be able to do differently with any.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have, we have uh we have the S, we have the um. As you know, because I brief you on uh on ongoing litigation, which is different than consultation, but it's, we have five cases with the planning board. We have the Marlboro case that's been ongoing uh that we're waiting. It's done, we're waiting for. And uh and uh and that's pretty much it. Uh as I said, uh Anza, when the when we were able to get the um. The uh Attorney General's Office to take over the S A Farm situation, uh that pretty much eliminated our our expenses there. So we don't have. Much in the way ever of litigation ongoing, so.
I just wanted to clarify that um. I I understand the comments are supposed to be about um. The. Finance and paying bills that we're about to approve getting paid. Um but the. The planning board um works really hard to make sure that they're representing residents and. I'm pretty sure that when they get sued, it's not up to them. It's up to the petitioner, right? It's up to the person who owns the land to bring a case. So I think we want to make sure we're looking at this from the right point of view, basically. You know, it really is uh I uh not a planning board decision intending to get sued, and it's just. Some of the language this evening has sounded um. Uh just a little mixed up. Maybe it's just in my head, but I just wanted to. Acknowledge that no one wants to get sued. I certainly wouldn't enjoy it very much at all. And um if someone is speaking up on behalf of. Residents, if they're elected and they feel like that's what they were put in the job to do, which is pretty much what I'm doing. Every time we have a meeting, I think it's it's important to acknowledge that that takes courage and it's not an easy thing. And if it was, if they did the easy thing, then, you know. It it wouldn't always, it wouldn't always go um. Well. People, people in elected positions can't always do the easy thing and. And I think it's important to to um. To see that, and it's also important for a town administrator to be. Able to be really good with money and balancing budgets, which we're lucky to have that.
Yeah, ju- just through the chair, there's no comment on the merits of the cases, uh it's just an expense that we need to cover. Merits of the cases have been discussed in executive session, and that was, that's not the intent here.
Okay, it's just you 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 mentioned it several times, so it does come across that way. So. If it was just me who who it came across to that way, I just. Needed to just mention that. Thank you.
Alright, thanks, Christian. Anybody else have any questions? Um. Alright, I'll entertain a motion regarding the year end transfers.
Uh yes, Mr. Chair, I move. Uh we vote to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty two year end transfers as presented in the twenty fourth June memo from the town administrator.
Second.
Motion made by Scott, seconded by Julian. Any further discussion? Uh Scott, how do you vote?
I.
Julian.
I.
Jason.
I.
And Kristen.
I.
I also vote I, vote as unanimous in favor. You've got the transfers, John. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up on our agi- agenda is the town administrator's review. Um. So uh as discussed at our last meeting, I collected the reviews from uh the four other members. I did not participate in the review because I was not. A voting member of the Board of Selectmen during most of the review period, but I did all of the. Consolidation and comments and everything like that. I sent that off to uh to John a little while ago. Um and I want to congratulate John on a four point O, which I think is uh is an excellent rating, given that we've got a very diverse board. Um with uh members with a lot of experience and members with less experience. Uh and uh so I I think you've you've got a lot to be proud of, John. I did uh ask the members of the board if anyone wanted to sponsor a motion. To not renew your contract. No one stepped forward, thus there is nothing on your agenda, and I think I presumptively congratulate.
Appreciate, I appreciate that.
Yeah. Um and um. So I I I think I'm very happy that you'll be with us for another three years. And um I did send around a consolidated uh also in the agenda packet, all of the comments, and I did my best to include all of the comments. Uh one member did get in touch over the weekend and uh and asked me to add another sentence to one of them. So on page four, there is. One other that is not in the packet, and I don't know if I'm going to be able to put my, here we go. On page four, there's a um sentence that starts with strives to constructively and responsibly assist citizens and groups, et cetera. Um I have added that upon request by the uh the member that submitted this, adding to the very end of that. Or otherwise unsatisfied with the response period maintains professionalism in his interactions with members of the public period. So that is the uh the final one that um I would like to uh entertain a motion to approve. Um the review unless anyone has any comments before making such a motion. Okay, Jason.
Can't find my camera.
Yeah, I see you.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. I I did want to say that uh John, thank you very much uh for another year of, in my opinion, very, very excellent uh fiscal management and. Operations management for uh everything across the town. Um these last couple of years have been extraordinarily difficult years for you and for all of town staff going through the covid environment. Uh it's necessarily uh required cutbacks in the budget for various items. Uh to be uh take a conservative stance and not knowing what the future would bring. Uh and additionally, it's a. Uh you know, diverted a lot of time and energy to other initiatives for that and caused. Other work that's been in progress uh to be delayed uh temporarily at least uh. Uh for that reason, and so uh I just appreciate the. The continuing dedicated effort. Over the entire fiscal year, uh last couple of fiscal years. Uh uh to just uh keep us on track, keep us. Well positioned financially uh to be able to. Have the flexibility to adapt to whatever uh changing conditions bring us and uh. I look forward to uh another another year. So thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
I'll add that I don't envy anyone that has to work for five bosses that potentially change every year. Um and that's a that's a hard job unto itself, and I would encourage board members. That haven't discussed prior reviews or even have um but have any constructive suggestions on how potentially the comments or ratings might improve in future years, so John can. Adapt to our changing membership uh to make an appointment to talk directly with John. Either on your own or with me or with any pair you want, obviously, not not three of us at the same time. Um that will help us. That will help us work better in the coming year. Kristen?
Um, so one of the interesting things that I learned when I was watching the video you recommended from the Mass Municipal Association about reviewing your town administrator was that it's a very unusual situation to have your review done in public. Super awkward and I.
You get used to it, sort of.
I guess you've been doing it for a while, but I thought about that for a while. And I think I, all my answers got nicer after that. Just kidding, just, no, but it does, it is, it is a very awkward potentially situation. And I think, I think we, we've been handling it well. And I just, I appreciate the fact that you, you do manage it. Also, though, it seemed like some towns do the assistant town administrator also by the Board of Selectmen, but we don't do that, is that?
No, that's my.
Do it that way, or what did I get?
Well, you know, every, you've got to be careful because every town is organized differently. Some are by bylaws, some are by charter, and who the appointing authority is. So I'm the appointing authority for the assistant and as I am for most of the staff. So I do the, I would do that evaluation. But if I may, through the chair, just, I would be remiss. First of all, thank you, I appreciate the feedback. And I think we have a lot to be proud of. It's been another great year. I have to tell you, these last, you know, year and a half or two years have been probably the, two of the most difficult as a public manager. Without a doubt, they were the two most difficult. And I've been through a lot of recessions and, and various situations. And I just want to publicly thank our department heads and our staff. I don't think people realize what a crackerjack team this, this town has. I'm just going to share one quick story with you. The fire chief loves to do after action hot washes where, you know, you go through, if there's an incident or problem and you go through and what could you have done better? What could you improve on? What would we change? And so we did one recently for COVID. It's been, you know, two years, looking back, and all the different stages. What if we could have done differently? How could we have improved? And first of all, as you know, I believe Northborough staff and departments, just tremendous job, tremendous job all around. But the thing that came out of that exercise was it was absolute chaos. The state didn't know what they were doing. The Department of Public Health didn't know what it was doing. The CDC didn't know what it was doing because it was unfolding in real time. And so as a result, you know, we didn't know what we were doing. We couldn't know what we were doing at many of these stages. But the one thing that held true throughout that entire process, and this is where the credit absolutely goes to the department heads and the staff, is the, everybody said, well, how did we manage and what was the upside of all this? And it came back to the relationships. We have a professional staff that gets along, they like each other, they work well. As the fire, as the fire chief responded, saying, nobody's throwing sand in the sandbox. But the relationships going into this emergency, the staff and the relationships were strong, including the boards and the committees working together. Because those relationships were so strong, we were able to deal with all of these other external issues and focus on those and not worry about having issues or problems in our own house. Now, not to, not going to throw stones, but if your, if your organization is in really good shape and you run into an emergency situation, you'll get through it. And there's always things that you can do better. But if your organization isn't running well and people aren't getting along and aren't on the same page, all that stuff comes out while you're trying to deal with this external threat. And I'm just really pleased and thankful for the great staff that we have and the wonderful job, the dedicated people that work for this town. Because I get to, I get to take credit for a lot of this stuff. But really, it's, it's, it's the staff. That's when the rubber hits the road and that's where they're the ones that make us all look great. And we have some wonderful, phenomenal staff that absolutely killed it for this, for you guys and for this community over the last two years. And I just, I just can't publicly thank them enough, so. That's all I want to say, thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other comments or questions, Julianne?
Um, I just, I just want to say what I say after every one of these evaluations. As long as I've been here, I firmly believe that the tool we use needs to be updated and reevaluated. It, watch, I didn't watch the entire webinar, but one of the great ideas that came out of that was a 360 evaluation, having, you know, sort of impartial people participate. I, you know, our, our lack of ability to get, to get information was a problem for me. And I, I really plead that we, at some point before the next evaluation, look at this tool and see if we want to use it. And congratulations, John, you, you did a great job. I, I, you, you and the staff deserve a lot of credit. But I would be remiss if I didn't say that, that the residents in town also deserved a lot of credit. They, they hung in there, they got vaccinated, they did what they had to do. So let's not forget about them. Thank you, that's it for me.
Okay, any other questions? Scott?
Yeah, just a follow up to Julianne. And Julianne, this, this all helped us, you know, thinking ahead to next review. Just to, can you describe like, like one, you know, one piece of the ballot form that, that was really like a sticking point? And then I can, I can highlight, you know, focus on that and then, and then think ahead.
Yeah, so personnel management, you know, are, justifiably, our ability to talk to, to staff is limited, but there's no, no survey that goes out, no anonymous surveys so we can get more information about that. I think that's the one that really strikes me as being something we have to take a good look at and how we get the information. We don't have exit interviews. Also, I do like this idea of the 360, you know, how, how do any of us deal with people in business? The schools, you know, everyone that the town administrator, and you know, and it comes down to us also. How are we doing?
Okay, that's helpful, okay. Because I was, you know, I was able to have the conversations with quite a few staff members. But going on that, I guess that's a, that's a question. Okay, thanks.
Well, you can let me know how you did that, so.
I, I think. You'll have to talk to staff when I randomly walk into their office and they're like, oh, this guy's here again.
Yeah, I, I think there's a, there's a, we, we should at least have a discussion about whether this is still the best format to use. I know this is referenced in your contract, John. So we'd have to have a discussion with you about changing it. That is not something the board should do unilaterally, but do in, in coordination with John. From my perspective, you know, as we start to add goals, which is our next, or two more agenda items down the list, you know, I, I think those should be part of the review process also. That's not for discussion really tonight, but just piggybacking on, on what Julianne suggested is I think, you know, in another couple of months, we should start to have a discussion about the review process so that if we are going to make any changes, that those changes are in place before we begin the review process next time around. There are no other questions. I do have one, one hand raised from the public. I'll bring in Tim Kalen. Kalen is using an over. I need to unfortunately promote you to panelist, Tim, because you've got an old version of Zoom, but I'm going to go ahead and do that now. And again, I would ask that any comments be limited to, to the discussion item here, which is the town administrator review. Hi, Tim. You're muted, sir.
Thanks for having me on, Tim Kalen, 42 David Street. I just wanted to thank the board for renewing John's contract. You know, in my opinion, it was the, the only decision to come to. I think John's done a fantastic job. I just wanted to comment also, as I've learned in working with various boards and committees, that there is a lack of talent available for municipalities to hire. And the fact that we hold on to the wonderful talent that we have in town, that they don't leave and go to other communities, I think is, is high praise for the leadership and the career opportunities that are available in Northborough. So I just wanted to thank John and thank everybody for renewing this contract.
Thanks, Tim. And I have one more hand up, Rutiger Volk, again, and same situation, Rutiger. I've got to promote you to panelist because I've got an old version of Zoom and I'd ask you to limit your comments to the town administrator's review. You could unmute your microphone, please?
Yes, hi, good evening. Thank you very much for taking my call. A couple of things, as a newcomer, so I, I will address it as more as a newcomer. A little bit disturbing, the applause from the board to the administrator. I personally, I have also during all the meetings, also quite nice impression about the administrator, but not to forget that he gets a salary also. I mean, and the applaud for the stuff is the same. What I want to applaud is more the committee. And in his achievements report that the administrator gave, he basically put out all the achievements of the committees which didn't get paid. So that's one thing. The other thing is, I would like as a customer, I see myself as a taxpayer customer, then also a competition. So that administrator runs the town as a business and it's not. There's a budget and the budget is, is always in the black, that's nice. But it should be also, where is, is there any chance of tax reduction? Is this really necessary?
I apologize for, for interrupting. Do you have any comments relative to the review itself that the board did for the administrator?
Uh, not, but it's, I heard that the, the report or the, it should be every year and it was not done every year. So could it be done every year so that, that next year is automatically placing in it?
Yes, the, the anticipation is it will be done every year.
Okay.
All set?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you very much for your comments. Okay, are there any other comments or questions from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the administrator's review as presented.
Mr. Chair, I move that the board vote to approve the town administrator's review for 2022, fiscal year 2022 as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made by Jason, seconded by Scott. Any other discussions? Okay, Jason, how do you vote?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
I also vote aye, vote is unanimous in favor. Approved, John, congratulations again. Next up, next up is the ARPA discussion on public input sessions and next steps. This is literally an open ended discussion on, on everything. So we had a fantastic, at least from my perspective, meeting back a few weeks ago with the public at the high school. And we've received many, many emails. Our next step is to do something with all of that information and decide, do we want to leave the, for example, the email address, we want to leave that open for a while, close that down? And, and what do we want to do next? We obviously have a lot of work to do to consolidate it. That was made easier by the meeting minutes of our input meeting on the 16th, which has that all nicely typed up already. So I, I'm just curious to hear from, from the board as far as how they think things are going and what we should do next. Kristen?
So one of the suggestions was in an email from a woman who suggested that, well, one of, one of our options, which they've done in other towns, is form an ad hoc committee, residents and some members of town boards and have them make, we'll, we'll go through all the recommendations and maybe prioritize them or organize them or even recommend certain recommendations. I wondered how my fellow board members felt about that.
Do you want to comment on that or have anything additional to add? Jason?
Yes. The, I don't know, my feeling is that the authority for making the decisions about ARPA funding ultimately rests with this board. And I think that many of the suggestions that have come in, I think are familiar to us now, well understood. I think we would benefit from having that information consolidated into a nice summarized form of all the various categories, all the various suggestions and some categorization. But I don't think there's a need for an intermediate step to delegate some of that work to. I think this committee is capable of doing that evaluation, making those decisions. We've had a public input process. I imagine we'll continue to receive public input, but at this point, I think that it's a narrow window here and we want to start taking some steps to make some decisions. And it might be difficult decisions to make when choosing from, you know, among some of the options. But my feeling is that this committee is perfectly capable of doing that with assistance from town staff to compile, summarize, categorize the information.
Julianne?
Yeah, I, I think that that idea would have worked if we had started this early on in the process. But at this point, I, I would like to hear, make sure that if any board or committee felt that they lost revenue or had extra burdens put on them, I'd really like to hear from them. And I don't know whether that means as liaisons, we reach out to them or just send a blanket email to all towns and committees and boards to make sure that we are hearing from them because they do, they do in essence represent a broad spectrum of town, I think. Can we add ideas now?
Yeah, add new ARPA funding ideas? Or I, I really wanted to discuss public input, so that, you know, the next steps.
Oh, public, oh, public input, okay. So my feeling is that we keep the email open until where, you know, we, we've gone down to half the amount of money or something. It's, I, I, I think, I think any communication is helpful and as long as we can keep that open is my, is my preference.
Scott?
Yeah, I agree with Julianne. Keep the, keep the input email open. I mean, there's no reason to, to turn that off, you know, continue to receive information. I, I think for some of the ideas, I think the, the funding sources aren't necessarily ARPA. So the, to begin to categorize those ideas and align them with existing work or existing responsibilities, you know, whether that be other boards, committees, commissions, departments, programs that we're getting grant money for already. I think we can move forward on quite a few of those and not, you know, it'd be good to get additional organizational input, but I don't think we need it as, as Jason said. So I think we could, we can move forward with quite a few of these with, with the resources we have. And we'll, and we'll see which ones, like I said, you know, many of them might not even be funded through ARPA. So I, I, I think I've said it before, is if we keep getting input on unmet community needs, I want to hear all of that and get it aligned with the appropriate department or board committee commission. And then as we go through those, those steps and specific projects are defined, then we can run the budgets to the appropriate project. Some of that's going to be out of free cash, some of that's going to be out of CPC, some are CBA funds, some of that's going to be out of ARPA, some of that's going to be, actually, a lot of it's going to be out of grants. So I don't think an additional committee helps us in, in that respect. I think we've got mechanisms where projects come through, expenses come through, whether it's financial planning or, or CPC, things like that. So we've got built in to the system, a lot of ways to, to. built in to the system, a lot of ways to to define these projects, get them evaluated and then bring in forward for decision. So I'm I'm pretty comfortable that we can move forward on on a lot of these and and not delay.
Yeah, I I agree. I think given where we are in the timeline, my preference is to not involve another another committee or outside agency. I think, you know, we've been learning a lot about this. I think we can take a a really good stab at at prioritizing and funding some of these things. And I agree, we may make connections for things that are not, but we can solve without using ARPA funds. And I think the goal is to identify those needs and solve them. ARPA just happens to be one of the tools at our disposal and right now a very unique and well-funded tool. I'd like to leave that email address open until we've committed the last penny of ARPA because some some idea may come up later, either that hasn't come up already or for a need that hasn't even arisen. So I'd say just keep keep that open and as people think of ideas, they should do that. I know at least some boards and committees have already been discussing ways that they might request use of ARPA funds or or other funds. For example, I also sit on the library board of trustees and there were some projects that we're in the process of gathering details for that we haven't put in a request because we don't have all the details, but but hopefully will in the, you know, in the near future. And that's just one example that there may be others and that's another reason to to leave it open. But at the same time, we've gone through a tremendous exercise and we should start working on it. And there may be things in there that in the near future, we may want to fund due to their timeliness for one reason or another, whether they be be capital items that we want to act on or they be, you know, social related programs or anything else, because the need continues and and is exacerbated over time. There are all all sorts of issues. So one way or another, we've got to start putting everything on a list, identifying dollar amounts, identifying potential revenue sources if for things that are not ARPA, noting who who made the request or which people made the request so that we might be able to go back and seek additional information. And I would like to, you know, at some point in the night, our next meeting or two, start to allocate some of those funds so that we can put the money to use. Scott?
Yeah, another thought, what what Julianne said about, you know, departments or or other committees, you know, bringing ideas forward. I guess that would that would be a potential if for the general residents, you know, they've got an idea, but maybe haven't fleshed it, you know, out completely. Just just having that idea and not knowing where to go to. I think we could very easily help align them with the appropriate board committee or commission and and then, you know, that group can help them flesh out the idea, bring it forward as a as a more full project. So let's say if if there's a resident that that has, you know, an idea in a certain area, you know, we can get them aligned, whether it's Board of Health or School Committee or, you know, whatever, to help you know, determine what the appropriate action would take, should be, could be taken against that unmet need.
John, did you have any ideas or input on this item?
No, I mean, I've provided the board with with a couple of memos, one most recently just before your last input session. I think, you know, my my thoughts is, you know, we we have existing master plans and capital plans and, you know, so I think those those need to be somewhat deferential to those. And again, taking in input that there are needs that are unmet, we should talk about them. The concern always you hear me at every meeting, talk about sustainability. I know this has seemed to like a lot of money. It is a lot of money, but in the grand scheme of things, you know, it's one time funding. It's about a 2% increase over, you know, for two years, over two years, 2% to 2%. Just need to be careful, you know, how we use it. My preference would be also that we not get into, you know, small $500, $1,000, like administratively, you know, pick a few significant projects or initiatives that that matter to the community and move forward. Move forward with those. But but I think I think you've, I think we've got everything that we need, frankly. Just a matter of pull it together and start to make some some decisions.
Kristen?
Um, would we be giving a little more money to the be well group? Or is that something that's on the table? Because like John said, we shouldn't be deciding the smaller amount budget items, but that seems to be a good group that could do that if it's if it's sort of the kind of thing that would be under that umbrella anyway. And I I know we give them $100,000. I don't know what what's left.
They're 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 good for a while. They don't they don't need any more funding at the moment, but you know, if things heat up and a lot of a lot of project requests come forward, you know, I think that's one of those where we kind of have to play it by ear. At the moment, and I do appreciate that, Kristen. At the moment, because they're doing a great job, but at the moment, they're they're fine.
Okay, so you'll just keep us, are you our contact with them?
Yep.
Right.
Julianne, did I see your hand up?
Yes. So actually, I do. I would like a little more information. And one specifically would be because we talk about budget shortfalls during COVID and if we could get a breakdown, Jason Little, I'm sorry to ask you for this because I know you're working on these reports, but what what was left that was not covered by the CARES Act or FEMA or any of the state or federal money that?
We still don't know that. That's going to play out for a while. Remember when I said reimbursement for storms, sometimes it comes a year later. So that's going to be an ongoing flowing process.
Well, maybe we could have like a general idea of things that weren't covered that we that are outstanding, that would be helpful. It doesn't have to be tonight, but as we move forward with this decision making. Jason, I see you now.
He popped on screen. So he loves talking about, he loves talking about grant compliance. He's having a great time.
Well, obviously, you know, I I hope any of the ARPA ideas are all going to be compliant with federal grant rules because I mean, one thing to remember that it is a federal grant in the end. So we can't get too far flung with what what gets done with it because we will have to be subject to audit and so forth with with these with these funds. I just add that we are going through the process of, you know, we went through the, first of all, is the CARES Act. We we did file a claim with FEMA and we did get that money already, but that was really just the initial claim from reopening buildings at the beginning of COVID. Those expenses went were through September of 2020. And as as you may recall, I think I've mentioned on here before that FEMA is was the the first claim that how how the pandemic was was being paid for. And they're they're probably the the worst agency to deal with in terms of getting getting money. Um, so in the in the end, we filed a claim for $92,000 and we we got approved for $28,000. Then we appealed some of their decisions and ended up getting $58,000. Along the way, the the CARES Act was approved, the town's allocation was 1.3 million from what was called the Coronavirus Relief Fund Municipal Program. So out of that, we were allocated 1.3 million, but that was turned into a reimbursement program. So um, we didn't get the, we got the money in a drawdown fashion where we requested money and we had to report all of our expenses and and along the way, right before on the cusp of the closing of the CARES Act program, which was October of 2021, which which seems like just yesterday, but they changed the rules whereby we could reapply our FEMA expenses that we had been incurring. So in the end, we ended up using most of our allocation. We spent 1.1 million. So up up to that point through October, December of this year, we really didn't have any costs that have been uncovered at this point. There's still an audit process going on. I've heard of some other towns going through their their CARES Act, their final closeouts for CARES being audited and and some some costs being clawed back because they weren't approved. But I mean, we're we're mostly in the clear. I don't think any of the expenses that we put through, obviously, they were legitimate. I looked at every single one of them, as did John through our process of paying bills. But the the we're probably out of the clear with that. So in terms of uncovered costs, the next thing that we're going to be facing is filing claims for the vaccination, the testing that that's gone on since the close of the CARES Act. So right now, we don't really know what's not covered because we have to go through a very very cumbersome process of filing filing those final claims with FEMA. And and we we have a few more days left till the disaster period ends. It goes through July 1st. So we could have more expenses that crop up, but it's unlikely at this point. So we we need to do that homework.
Thank you. And so basically, this is really good news. Mostly, everything was covered, right?
Like I said, to this point, yes, the our costs that were through December have generally been covered. So like I said, we are going to be going through the process of consolidating all these costs and putting them through to FEMA and seeing what what will be covered for what remained after that.
Thanks an awful lot.
Yeah, if if I may, through the chair, just one comment to keep in mind, everybody is that, you know, the the federal government gave this ARPA funding in part to deal with direct expenses and issues with COVID and for, you know, how many times have we sort of opened the doors and windows and said, hey, we're back open, everything is back to normal, whatever that is. And then, you know, just this past January, we almost locked down again. So something to keep in mind is I do believe strongly, as I've as I've said in my communications, we do need to maintain a reserve to deal with actual direct COVID-related expenses that may, you know, pop up again. At some point, we'll start to ease off of that. But I don't anticipate, you know, if if there's another variant and that things get difficult again, the federal government is going to say, well, you've got your money, use it. So we just want to make sure. And I don't really have a date in in mind. I just want to caution that we need to have a certain reserve. We've been extremely, extremely lucky and productive in obtaining grants to fund most things. So we've had great success there, but but we want to have a little bit on reserve. But make sure that we don't hold too much that we can't spend it before the deadline. So just something to keep in mind.
Yes, thanks for the details on that. So I I think what I'm hearing is as next steps, leave the email address open. We've got to work on consolidating and collecting all of this information. I will, I will volunteer myself and perhaps Julianne as vice chair. If you're willing to work with me on that and certainly with with staff, maybe I don't want to put too much on on your plate directly, John, but maybe somebody in your office could could also help us out as we go through just collecting the information, no decisions as part of that in the hopes that for our July 18th meeting, we would have some summary information back and we can decide again whether there are our next steps or whether we want to begin funding things. And I know there are, there are some things that are becoming more more pressing. So it's, it wouldn't surprise me if John included some some requests for that meeting for us to consider some expenses then. That sound reasonable to everybody?
Yeah, sounds great.
Julianne?
Well, one of the, one of the items that came up at the meeting was the community meals. Does anybody remember what their what their deadline was? I felt like it was coming up really soon and I wonder if we could help them out.
If I remember. Sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry. I should ask to be recognized, Mr. Chair.
If I if I remember correctly, they're current, they've said recently that they're currently funded through September. And they're always collecting additional funds. John, is that roughly consistent with what you?
Yeah, through September, the other thing is working with with the Board of Health. There's a, there are a number of grants and sources of funding. That's actually, I think we would have very good success at obtaining. Obviously, we want to make sure the program continues. But if we 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 want to leverage, you know, every grant, there's a lot of money floating around right now. So we want to leverage that as best we can and and hang on to the funds for the things that we can't get grants for. But but they they should be good through September. So we've we've got plenty of time.
Okay. And Julianne, are you okay with me volunteering you to to work with me on that?
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right. I don't know if there are any other comments from the board. We have one hand up in the audience. All right, I'll bring in Tim Kalin. Again, old Zoom, so you're a panelist. Congratulations. Tim, go ahead.
Hi, Tim Kalin, 42 Davis Street. I like this. I can call him like 10, 12 times a meeting.
We did this just for you, Tim.
Now I don't have to go through that past the election. Since the Diversity and Inclusion Committee isn't up and running at this point, I just wanted to remind the board that part of the recommendations that the Diversity and Inclusion Committee put forth in January was an ask for approximately $150,000 to hire a consulting firm to come in and help the 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 new Diversity and Inclusion Committee come up with strategies and implement those strategies. And we asked for that money to come out of the ARPA funds. So I would hope that the the board will show that it is serious about diversity and inclusion in the community and give the committee, the the new committee, the financial resources that it has asked for. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. And Tim, Tim, if you if you haven't already, please send an email to that ARPA input address to make sure that we've got that on our list. I'm sure we do.
That was in, that was included in the memo I put together for the board. The details of the study as well and the cost.
Fantastic. Any other other questions or comments on ARPA before we continue the meeting? Okay, we will move along. We have no votes to take on on the ARPA at this time. And our last real item on the agenda is discussion of goals for the town administrator. So I'd asked everyone to to come to the meeting with, you know, one to three goals in mind. We talked about some possibles at our last meeting. My hope is is that we can have a few discussed a little bit more in depth tonight. And and hopefully at our next meeting, be able to potentially vote on a a small but refined set of goals for for John for the coming year. Okay, who wants to go first? Julianne?
I'll I'll go first. And and I apologize. I'm not sure if this is exactly what you were looking for, but well, obviously, the first thing that comes to mind is traffic, traffic, traffic. So whether it's forming a traffic safety committee, just addressing that problem and, you know, seeing what solutions we can come up with, I think is is a goal that that is appropriate at this time. The other, the other thing is economic development and, you know, it's been talked about for a long time and suggested, and I think that it's also an appropriate goal. And my third thing would be to continue any action items with green communities, but to in involve sustainable Northboro more and and make a little more progress in that area. So those are my three suggestions.
Thank you, Julianne. Waiting for another hand to go up or I'll just start calling on people. Jason, I'm calling on you.
Well, okay. To suggest three things, first thing I think at the top of my list is the fire station project. I think that it's a big ticket capital item. The economy is not going in the direction we would prefer at the moment and it's important for us to kind of close the loop on this project and try to, you know, bring the schedule in to whatever extent we can in order to move forward with it. So that would be in my mind, a first major thing to to focus on. A second thing would be one thing that I think has become clear is that and I've said this a couple of times, it's a very lean organization in town hall. And some of the problems that we have are just too much work falling on too few shoulders. And so I would support the notion of a staffing study that would kind of do a comprehensive look across all town departments, taking into account some of the initiatives that we think we're going to be moving forward with in the future and make a determination about what additional level of staffing we might need in order to accomplish those objectives and and at what cost. As you know, John has frequently said, and it certainly has made an impression on me. You know, municipal operation. You know, municipal operations, recurring expenses, it's not something to take lightly. Once you make that commitment, it's very difficult to undo it. But perhaps we have reached the point where additional staffing, a few key positions, we'd provide a lot of leverage to what what John and remaining staff can accomplish. And then as a third item, I actually have a couple of them highlighted, but perhaps the sidewalk master plan and complete streets program is something that has gotten a lot of attention in town. A lot of people seem to have that as a concern, and it seems like with the complete streets, the initial step we've taken and the approval we've gotten to kind of move forward in that direction and see what improvements might be made. That seems to be something that I think the community would benefit from.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, who who would like to go next? And I will add, it is perfectly appropriate, perhaps even requested to simply echo any other items. We don't have to add three that we haven't talked about because then we've got a lot of goals to to consolidate.
I I'll go next.
Sure, Scott.
So the easier going third, because I I also had on my list trying to bring forward as quickly as possible on the fire station. You know, we 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 lost time on that and just to try to get that phased appropriately into the schedule and and be able to deal with the the financial impacts of that and the improvement to public safety that that provides. I guess kind of pivoting off of what Jason said about the complete streets and sidewalks, I get, I guess, you know, going back to the elements that are coming out of master plan implementation committee where, you know, being in 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 support of the downtown revitalization and on the infrastructure improvements in terms of streets and and sidewalks. Also, in support of the staffing study on to help look across across the board that way. And then I think in in previous bits, you know, we talked about making these goals, you know, extra and not just the the normal business. And so I think not losing, you know, focus on our financial policies and procedures. And so, yeah, we've got to do the budgeting anyway, but I think a 12th year of the budget award, you know, is a nice goal to have. Let's continue to be recognized and and awarded for the work we do. So might be the the normal business, but getting going above and beyond to get that recognition and awarded while we still strive for for that that acknowledgement to to the town. Those are the main items on my list.
Scott. Kristen, it's down to you. Well, and then me. I get the luxury of really going last.
Right, right. Okay, thanks. So I have for a small one, change our name to select board. That's a good one. And even Jason is smiling. Come on, like, everyone is smiling. Even Jason, I got a little smile out of him. Like, that's one we all know how to do. We can check the box, get it done, be like, goal accomplished, yay. So that's a good.
I'm not sure. Yeah, I apologize for interrupting. I'm not sure if that's a goal for John or something. That's more of of more on us.
Yeah.
I agree with you. We got to do it.
My my goals were, like, tonight, you said for John, but when I wrote down homework, I wrote goal ideas, so I wasn't specifically thinking of for John.
That's fine.
So it was kind of for all of us. So anyway, that's on us. I agree. But and then I had actually one of my goals was organize and synthesize the ARPA suggestions. So you've already decided who's doing that. So that's cool. So one of my other goals, and these do, you know, I guess they're all all of us. And I love the staffing study idea. So Julianne mentioned sustainability, and then Jason mentioned the complete streets idea. And I wrote down walkability for the town and general sort of methods of getting places that aren't in a car, right? So also, I guess, bike ability. But I'm thinking our our sustainability and and complete streets and walkability, like, they're kind of all connected. If you know, if you look at it from a certain perspective, so I think we're we're all kind of thinking on a lot of things that are are easily connected. And then like, we don't have to put everything in little boxes, right? And then I also had, just being on the interview committee, kind of alerted me to thinking about what kinds of people are on our boards and committees. So this is more me, I guess, with staff, it would be more John. But getting people who aren't straight white people to be on more boards and committees and more more positions if if we are hiring new staff here and there, always have that be a consideration to get that perspective and not have it just be people on the DEI committee also. And then, okay, and then one other one that I don't know who is in charge of it, but a lot of people ask me about White Cliffs, and I never know what to say. So if we could have give Kristen an answer for that or a series of answers, and I I I I heard Julianne actually had an update on that. They had a meeting and stuff, so that that's great news. I I look forward to hearing more about that. And and I hope we can get that moving along. Thank you. That's it.
Thanks, Kristen. The three that I had are all echoed in some way, shape or form by some of the others, which is great. I had downtown revitalization as one, which certainly ties in with economic development. And to some extent, with walkability and and other things like that. You know, I look at downtown revitalization as a a narrow but critical subset of the master plan and economic development. White Cliffs was on my list. I think that's a project that, you know, we should dedicate some more of our energy and regular, you know, a little bit more frequent discussion to get that done. And we don't know what done is with White Cliffs. I know people have all sorts of ideas. But we've we've got to move it forward. It's been, you know, sitting open for for a few years, a couple of those years because of COVID, we really couldn't do anything. But I'd like to see us step up and then check that one off of the list before too long. And I had strategic planning, which is really staffing study. It's really the really the same thing. So I think we've got, obviously, and these are all good things. If something doesn't make the goal list, it doesn't mean it doesn't get done. John will be doing a lot of are going to be doing, he's going to be doing a lot of things anyway. And these are the things particularly that we want to keep, you know, an extra close eye on and and have that fall into the the review at the end of the year. So that's how to how to think about this. And I'm not sure exactly what to do next, but John, I don't know if you had any any comments or any any thoughts, or if you're just going to let the board hash this one out on our own.
No, I think it's interesting. I mean, I try to I try to package this stuff up for you guys, you know, both what we've accomplished. But, you know, if you look at the list of things that we're going to be working on, the reality is, you know, the only one of the big things that we do need to do that nobody mentioned is the, you know, town offices feasibility study and taking back for West Main. That's going to be a significant undertaking. Whether or not you list it as a goal, it's still going to take up a big chunk of of our time. You know, you've got the budget, the GFOA, fire station, historic, the White Cliffs reuse, town hall feasibility study. I know you don't care, but you know, we got to wrap up five collective bargaining agreements, but that's day to day. I get that. But it is a lot of the day to day sidewalk master plan and complete streets, you know, dealing with the American Rescue Plan Act, as well as all the reporting and and stuff that we need to wrap up. Strategic planning and, you know, an organizational wide staffing study. I mean, those were all things that I kind of put together for you guys. So it's always helpful to get a focus of what you see as being the most important things. But I think basically you've all hit on everything that I've, you know, I've kind of put together for you. And in some respects, they're all important and they're all going to need to get done. I think what what I hope the board takes away is that, you know, there's a lot on the plate. And as we get going during the course of the year, new things pop up and, you know, we just need to be cognizant of of adding additional significant projects when we have all of these things that are ongoing, whether or not each individual board member feels that it's a priority. These things all need to get done. So of all the things in here, long term, what I think will reduce frustration for you and me and staff is to get some agreement on the resources and a staffing study needs to be done. We're long overdue for that. You know, we can have as many boards and committees or special projects as the town would like. But I we just can't keep stacking things up on the limited staff that we have. And I think one of the things that you're going to find if we and and hopefully, if we do proceed with a with a full staffing study is one of the things you're going to find is just how much bang you get for your current tax bill buck for the staff that you have. They're very, very productive. But, you know, if we're going to expand, we're really, we're really at limits here. And I think that's something you need to take a good hard look at. The other thing, part of that staffing study is also an unlimited capacity to look at a couple of the couple of the way we're organized in a couple of places with a few departments should be looked at as well as, we're always talking about adding committees. At some point, we need to take a break and eliminate some of these defunct committees that meet once a year or every two years that you have to go through the process of appointing people to, that they don't have anything really productive to do. And so we need to kind of, I think, clean out some of these committees if we're going to make room for new committees that people feel are important. So I think that staffing study and looking at a little bit of a structure as well as board and committee composition, I think, is is be helpful, which is really ultimately, we need to align our resources with what we all agree to as being our priorities. And when those things aren't lined up, and this what happens when you get changes in boards, you're you're not aligned anymore. And that's when it starts to chafe and people aren't clear, well, staff's not clear what they should be focusing on, boards and committees aren't clear why certain things that they're important to them aren't being focused on. So it's a good process. And I think that with a little bit of, you know, strategic planning, one of the things I did want to talk to you about as well as I would like to see the board engage in a real in a formal strategic planning process and goal and goal setting process as a organization. Because again, as a manager, what I'm always trying to do is get all the folks that I have to report to and work with pointed in the same direction and agreeing on what the priorities are. And so when that alignment isn't there, it just makes things a little bit more difficult. And obviously, staff wants to be responsive, board wants to get accomplished what you think are the priorities from the perspective of the residents. So we're all trying to get to the same place. We need a plan to do that. And that's my suggestion for the plan. So I hope we can have a conversation about that. I think it's short money. And it doesn't need to be a massively elaborate process, but it's something that I think will help align the boards and committees with staff and then identify resources that are necessary to get to where we want to be. And that's ultimately, that's what our collective jobs are. We're trying to get that alignment as a as an organization. And once you get that alignment, things go much smoother. So I appreciate the input or being asked for my input.
Okay, I saw Julianne's hand up first.
So the strategic planning process sounds absolutely necessary. And and obviously, that means hiring a consultant or some group to come in and evaluate us. Do do the selectmen get to have input into that information that they gather?
Of course, of course. Yeah, the idea is to take, you know, is to make sure that all the perspectives are being brought together and synthesized. And a big piece of it is, you know, we have on all boards and committees, people with varying levels of expertise or experience. And so a big piece of it is getting, you know, getting agreement on information and and process. And if you can't agree on the information, it's hard to have a process that's going to be fruitful. So it's it's all of that. It's taking the perspective of staff, boards, committees, so as a role input from from residents and start to coalesce that alignment. And then you've got to match what it is you say you want to accomplish with realistic resources to get you there. And and if and if you're not willing or able to align those resources, then you have to have subsequent discussions about tightening up, tightening tightening up what your priorities really are, because you can't do everything. And I think that if there's one thing I can tell you coming out of the last couple of years is we can't do, we can't do everything. We do everything that's critical. But, you know, we can't just keep adding on new boards, committees and new initiatives. We need to wrap some things up or move away from some things that maybe aren't adding the value in the opinion of the of the stakeholders. So it's a good process, a little bit of cleaning house, it's a little bit changing of focus. And I I find it, it's a helpful exercise, especially when you have new board and committee members.
Kristen.
So does that like are we are we just doing this at our our regular meetings or?
So my suggestion, and again, I'm happy to kind of package something up for your discussion. I have had some discussions with the Collins Center, you know, UMass Collins Center. It's something that they do. There are a number of consultants that do this type of work. Thing is, you don't want, I want to participate. I don't want to direct. It's not appropriate for the chairman to 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 direct, you know, the ideas were all participants and to to bring all that in. But so you'd be looking for, you know, an independent third party to kind of facilitate this. And and they can be as as simple as what what I would suggest is a, you know, kind of a little dedicated retreat of the board.
Yeah, that was my question. That's what.
It's never really a retreat because we're a public entity. So you're always going to have looky-loos and and apparently comments on everything on the agenda. So just give you a hard time. But but no, to do a retreat and set some time aside to to do this, there's a lot of background, sort of compiling of information and getting everything together. And then there's a processing and a discussion component of it. And I I just think it would be helpful to get us in a little bit better alignment.
That was my, yeah, that was why I brought it up.
Yeah, it's not something you do as an add on to a busy agenda, in my opinion.
No, and they mentioned it at this MMA video that I watched. And they did say that you can have, it has to be an open meeting. But you do it in person and you don't allow public comment. So people can watch, but they can't interrupt and.
That would be my suggestion, that it would be retreat for the board. You know, and people can watch, as you say, but it it's it can be distracting. You know, the idea is trying to get us as a, to some extent, it's a bit of a, you know, do this with my staff. It's a bit of a team builder, like it's a little bit of education, education in that, you know, taking the time to listen to other perspectives, make sure that you have agreement on the information. You know, I mean, if if staff is telling you we're spending, you know, 50% of our time on this, but you don't value it, or you don't think we should be spending that much time on it, we need to have that discussion. You know, how much time is being spent? What are the priorities? Because on the other side, if we're going to be held accountable, you got to give, you got to give us a fighting chance to to reasonably meet the expectations. And we haven't, in fairness, some staff in some departments this last couple of years, we just, we've just gotten by. And we're coming out of it, but it's still kind of recharging a little bit, trying to get our feet back underneath of us. Good time to maybe stop and take stock of, you know, are we are we marching ahead at full speed in the direction we all say, you know, we want to be going in? Does that make sense? Yeah, I think I think you'll find it helpful. I know the staff will find it helpful.
That would be great. Would the staff be there or are they just?
No, it's sort of a ground up bubble up process, you know, of kind of like what we do with our legislative priorities, you know, you're kind of looking for the input of, you know, really for the board, it's making sure that there's a good understanding of where we're spending our time and where our resources are currently committed and what what those projects are. And then what do we want, of things that we're doing that nobody values that aren't critical to public safety or or the organization, and maybe we drop a few of those. I think we have a lot of, as I mentioned, there's there's maybe some committees that could be combined, there's some committees that could be dissolved. This will, some some of these committees and work that we entertain, you know, goes back to the 1970s that really don't have a very strong role, but we're spending time and energy on that. Maybe we could spend. have a very strong role, but we're spending time and energy on that. We maybe we could spend on some, some newer committees.
Thanks. That's great.
I don't want to spend too much more time on any particular goal, um, although this has been very informative. Um, I, I would suggest as next steps is I have, I've written down everything that, uh, that everyone suggested tonight. Um, maybe John, you and I can get together sometime over the next couple of weeks and start to review some of these things and see what makes sense as goals. We may come back at our next meeting with too many and then the board can.
You're going to have too many goals because we have too many important projects. Like I said, whether or not, nobody mentioned the old town hall and the town hall feasibility study. It doesn't matter whether or not you have that as a goal. That is going to take up a big chunk of time in the next year. It's unavoidable. So. But, but I do appreciate knowing what you guys are focused on.
So at our next meeting, perhaps we can, we can narrow it down and potentially approve them. Everyone good with that process? Yes. Excellent. Good. Thank you very much, everybody for, uh, for lots of wonderful discussion tonight. Um, is there any other business before us?
Other businesses evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh, one last opportunity for public comment on any item. Oh, oh, we have a, we have a taker. Glad I remembered that. Lisa Muselli, I'm bringing you in.
I know you're killing me over here, guys. You did a great job tonight. It was wonderful to see the conversation and the discussion. Congratulations. This is a lovely place to be. I'm so happy to see that happening and I want to make a, a recommendation to remove the, the annual MMA town report contest. It's been 12 years, really. You did a great job. I don't think you have to keep doing that over and over again. Move on, get something more important. That'll be your number one goal and start afresh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for the record, um, we're legally required to produce an annual report every year. That's what we do. We don't do it for the award. So, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Actually get fined if you don't produce an annual report.
Yeah. Let's see, I have already recognized Lisa. Lisa, your hand is still up if you are not. If you don't have anything else, there we go. You lowered your hand. Okay. And if there's nothing else, um, and there's nothing else from the board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Here we go. All right. I will say Jason made the motion and Julian seconded it. Nothing personal. Scott, uh, Jason, how do you vote?
I.
Julian.
I.
Kristen.
I.
Scott.
I.
I vote I. Vote is unanimous. We are.